Dear Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for all the blessings, Lord, that you bring upon us as individuals in Columbia County. Lord, we ask that you lead us and guide us through this meeting to make the tough decisions for the county for the betterment of any and all citizens. And, Lord, we just want to thank you for all the many blessings that we just, so overwhelming, we just can't even, you know, realize how blessed we are. Lord, we want to thank you most of all for our son, Jesus Christ, who makes this all possible for us here and today. Amen.
Good man.
Blessed be the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no end.
That's his call. Okay. Before we get started today, I'm gonna take just a few minutes. I'm gonna read a little bit about the rules of decorum for the meeting. And, uh... Just think about disruptions a little bit. Okay, the rules of decorum. The Board expressly recognizes that promoting and presenting decorum and civility best enables the Board to fairly and expeditiously conduct the business of the county. While the Board is in session, the presiding officer shall preserve order and decorum. A Commissioner shall neither, by conversation nor otherwise, delay or interrupt the proceedings. And that means the public also. By the disruptions, any person disrupting a Board meeting by interrupting any speaker, making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, by addressing or shouting to the Board from the audience, or by other boisterous behavior while the Board is in session, may be removed from the meeting by order of the pending officer, through the assistance of the Sheriff's Office, or other security personnel. Such removal may be requested by the Chair in his or her discretion, or by consensus of the Board after a question of order is raised, or by the Sheriff's Office on its own initiative if there is perceived to be an immediate threat to the safety of any person inside this meeting chamber. No demonstrations of approval or disapproval from the audience shall be permitted. If after warning by the Chair such disruption may be, such demonstrations are made and result in a disruption of the meeting, the persons creating such disruptions may be removed from the meeting. The Chair may, without motion, recess any meeting until order is restored. The Chair shall call upon the Sheriff's Office or other security officers who may be present during the meeting to enforce directions given by the Chair for any violation of the rule. Now, these, these rules will be administered during these meetings. And if you want, you know, when you come up here to speak, all these Commissioners are going to give you all the respect you deserve. But we also demand that respect also. So when you're speaking to the Board, you address the Board, you don't address people in the audience, and you don't curse, and you show respect, or you will be asked to sit down at that time. So, anybody got anything to add to that?
Mr. Chairman, the only thing that I know that we need to do, we need to be, the Chair needs to be consistent. If it's two minutes for one, it should be two minutes for everybody. I think that's where we're getting the problem about. If we let one person go three minutes, and we don't shut them down, a person goes two minutes, goes two minutes, and a little bit over two minutes, then we want to shut them down. As long as everything is fair and equal, I don't think we have this. The Chair has to set a protocol on when to set somebody down, and don't wait. It's got to be equal. It can't be slanted. It's got to be the same for everybody. And I think if you do that, then we won't have any problem whatsoever.
Well, Commissioner, if somebody's engaged in question-answer session with the Commissioners, that's a difference that's setting up there in your framework.
I disagree with you, Mr. Chairman. You the Chair, you're on your beat like you want to.
So, that... I do, I do.
See, you cut me off now. I didn't cut you off.
Well, I thought you were...
No, you know, I was still talking. See, that's what we're talking about right now.
Well, finish up.
You got to be, one has to be consistent. If you let one go over, you got to let everybody go about the same time. You cannot cut them off. And I think that's where the problem we are having right there is just being consistent on the time limit. Mr. Look always said, well, if you go three minutes, we won't have this. If we set it at two minutes, there's a lot of places where it's two minutes, but we got to be consistent with the two minutes. That's all I'm saying. I'm through now.
Thank you. Well, if a Commissioner is asking a question, and they're trying to answer the Commissioner's questions, I'm not going to ask them to sit down and just shout their two minutes is up. But now, if they're not engaged in a question-answer session with the Commissioners, and they're on a subject that's pertinent to the information we have or that we're discussing, then we'll use that as a judgment call at that time. So, if anybody else don't have anything to add, I'll ask Tom to come up at this time. Well, first of all, do we have any additions or deletions to the meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I request that the Board waive the rules to allow us to, like we did last month, the Board to vote to waive the rules to allow additions and deletions.
I move that we take the request of Chair to waive the rules to bring up his three items for discussion tonight.
Second. Got a motion? Now, David, one question. David, didn't you just, if you would, tell everybody what you just told me, that these are not time-sensitive issues?
Right. For the most part, these are not time-sensitive issues. They were brought up at the Commission work session. For the most part, there is one item that wasn't brought up at the Commission work session. But the two items were brought up at the work session and asked to be discussed tonight.
The three, the three items is notice to intent to vacate a subdivision, DOT road projects, reprioritization, and veteran services. Basically, we was, I guess, when Mr. Worley was up, he decided he was going to work 30 hours a week instead of 20. So, we decided we didn't need an extra man, part-time, in that position. And I think Commissioner Murphy, you was the one that said you wanted to add this to the meeting to do that, to do away with that.
Well, we, we just need to correct it.
Yeah. So, is the DOT, I thought, I thought the whole reason for adding the DOT list was because it is time-sensitive, is it not?
It is very time-sensitive.
DOT thing is time-sensitive.
Kevin just told me it's July. They didn't July. We haven't even got the June yet.
For clarification, I did not get an exact date. What the Department told me was the fruit is ripe. Their fiscal year begins in July. They did not tell me a time. They just told me I needed to get it done if that's the wishes of this Board. I did not get a date.
Do I get a second? Have I got a second?
Yes, Mr. Hollis.
Yeah.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Please my second out.
So, we have two opposeds.
Yeah, three with two.
Yep. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, you need to take a motion to amend the agenda.
You want to get a motion to amend the agenda?
Move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Get up.
Is it just Mr. Murphy?
Yeah, yeah. Pardon me?
The agenda?
Okay, we're speaking out.
So, okay, Tom, at this time, will you come up?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, again, thank you for allowing me to come in to address you, give you an update on what's going on with the Health Department with COVID-19. As we're all aware, things have slowed down, especially in my world, as far as vaccines go. Cases, the Board's aware that I track the seven-day average, and as of today, the seven-day average is 44 cases. And what we're, what we're seeing is that fluctuates somewhere between 35 to 45, 50, somewhere in that range. So, I hate to say that that's normal. Zero cases would be normal, but it sure beats the 200 that we had over the holidays. And so, talking about the 44 cases and vaccines, vaccines are waning. But one, one of the changes the CDC made in their most recent guidance, and I don't think it gets advertised that much, so I just want to mention it here, and that is if you are fully vaccinated and you are a direct contact of a positive, as we know in the past, if you were a direct contact, you went home for two weeks and you quarantined. The new guidance states if you're fully vaccinated and you are a direct contact of a positive, you no longer have to quarantine unless you are showing symptoms yourself. At that point, you just have to get tested, and as long as you're clear, you do not have to quarantine. So, that's a, that's a big change that they've made. And the reason I bring that up is they have made changes now, taken the vaccine down to age 12. So, you know, it was 18 and older for a while. Now, it's 12 to 17 that can get the Pfizer vaccine. And, and I know that there's a lot of parents out there that had kids at home quarantined over the school year. So, you know, again, it's their choice whether they want to have children vaccinated, but I think that they need to be aware that that is one of the options, that if their child's fully vaccinated, they would not be quarantined and sent home like they were this current year. Due to the downward turn of vaccines requested of the Health Department, and I think that's twofold. It's, we've had less requested of us, but at the same time, I provided a document showing you all the locations that are available in the area. That's something that we put together. Nobody told us. Nobody provides that information to us. We reached out to all the pharmacies. So, you have a list of that, and I made sure that the paper had a copy of that so that they can publish that as well. But due to the availability, we're seeing a downturn of the requests of the Health Department. So, starting next week, we will not be out at the fairgrounds. We, the numbers that we have that are set for next week, we can accommodate that at the Health Department. Now, it's still not going to be inside. We can, we can still do drive-through opportunities right there at the Health Department. And in a rain event, we've worked with Lake Shore Hospital Authority, and they have granted us the use of the canopy at Lake Shore Hospital if we need that in a weather event, so that we can still do the drive-through opportunities. That's just much more efficient to get people in and out when they come in. Wanted to let you know that we had the state donate a trailer to us. You know, trailers are hard to come by right now, and, you know, funding, grant funding, there's a lot of money floating around, but you can't buy certain things. We learned that we needed trailer capabilities, and the state had a surplus. We just got that in, so we'll be doing some renovations on that and have another trailer for, for our supplies. Wanted to let you know that if you're familiar with the RDSTF, which is, that's a mouthful, it's the Regional Domestic Security Task Force. So, the region two, which Columbia is in, that includes Gaddiston, Liberty, Franklin, Wakulla, Leon, Jefferson, Madison, Taylor, Hamilton, Swanee, Lafayette, Dixie, and Columbia. I was just named the co-chair for that region group. So, to let you understand what that does for us, that actually gives us some additional personnel that they will not physically be housed here, but it's some regional personnel that will support the Health Department in either some kind of domestic issue or in response to hurricanes. So, it does provide some additional support for us. So, I'm really excited about that, to have been named to do that. And then, the last thing I wanted to share with you, it's always good when you hear about money. And I know that there's some money that's going to be talked about tonight dealing with the COVID relief. And the only thing I want to say about that is, you know, when the time comes, please don't forget the Health Department, because we took the brunt of a lot of this stuff, and there's some things that we could do. So, please don't leave us out on that. And then, on a much more positive note, this afternoon, about 3 o'clock, I got an email and have communicated this to Columbia County School District. I have been awarded for Columbia $3.4 million that I will be working with. The school district is part of the COVID response over the next year, the 15 months, because as we know, when the fall hits and flu starts again, we'll probably see this pick up. So, we were just awarded $3.4 million to work with the school district to make sure that there's anything we may need between the Health Department and to support the school district, either mental health support, vaccinations, you know, testing, sanitation, any type thing. We'll sit down with them over the next week or so and figure out how we, how we manage that. But I just thought that the Board would want to know about that. I think that's really good stuff to... So, with that, I'll open it up. Any questions?
Who awarded that to you, Tom?
That, it came from the Department of Health, but it's a CDC grant that was, was given to the state. So, all 67 counties will get funding. Columbia's portion was 3.4 million.
Is that state money or federal?
It's federal money, but it's being channeled through the state. Yes, sir.
Tom, are y'all doing the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine?
We are not. For the most part, the state has sent us Moderna day in and day out, with the exception, we had roughly 600 doses of Johnson &amp; Johnson that came in at one point. We distributed those, and they have not sent us any more Johnson &amp; Johnson since then. We don't get to pick and choose what they send us. They distribute that. So, we don't have that, but there are vendors in the, in the community that have it. So, if somebody wanted Pfizer, somebody wanted Moderna, somebody wanted Johnson &amp; Johnson, there's a vendor in the, in the county that's providing one of those vaccines.
Any more questions for Tom?
Just stay at it, Tom. Thank you, buddy.
As always, thank you, thank you for your support. We appreciate it.
Does it seem like you're getting, so you're getting a lot less and less people applying for the vaccines?
That is correct. That is correct. We can finally see light into the tunnel.
There's a lot of other places to get it now, too.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Do you have, do you know about what percentage rate is of people in Columbia County getting vaccinated?
The big number that we're tracking is over 65, and right now, it's still steady. It's about 59.2%, although we know 7% is sitting at the VA. We, for some reason, the state cannot get that information out of the federal system. So, you know, we're definitely much higher than that, and that's, it's frustrating for us.
What is the state average?
The state average is between 60 and 65, depending on where you are. Some of the, some of the counties are at 70 and 80%, 65 and older.
All righty. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thanks for everything you do.
All right. So, have a great day.
Okay, Mr. Lawrence Davis at Columbia High School.
Good evening, Council Commissioners.
Good evening.
Guess you already know my name, but however, I'm Coach Lawrence Davis, and I have with me Ms. Sarah Chancy. Guess you already know my name, but however, I'm Coach Lawrence Davis, and I have with me Ms. Sarah Chancy. I'm the current track and field and cross-country coach at Columbia High School. In fact, I'm in my second term as coach, my first term was in the middle 90s, and now I'm back again. In fact, I have with me Mrs. Chancy, I just want to let you all know that the success of our program is very viable. Her son Cole, Cole Chancy, he's just recently signed the letter of intent to run track and participate in cross-country at Flagler College. So, I think we have a little bit of proof as to the viability of our track and field and cross-country programs. All of the County Commissioners, you should have already received the packet that we provided. Basically, what I'm going to talk about today is the resurfacing of the track at Columbia High School. You can follow along in that packet, I have talking points myself, but you can follow along as I go through the presentation. Bottom line, ladies and gentlemen, the track at Columbia High School is old. It's simply old and outdated, the, it's an old asphalt track, it's cracked, grass is growing through, the lines are faded, and it's time for us to resurface it. Most of our academic institutions, programs, high schools, colleges, universities, they're resurfacing, if they haven't already resurfaced their running tracks, but they're resurfacing them with modern surfaces such as polyurethane, which is basically what you call a rubberized track. These particular surfaces are very good for athletes because they are better at absorbing the contact of the foot on the surface, it cuts down on injuries. And if you're a coach, then you understand, if anything that can cut down on injury, that means that's more time for you to be training, that's more time for you to be getting in condition and being able to perform. Any downtime where you're recovering from injuries and things of that nature, that's time which is away from being able to perform at your best when it's time to compete. So, that's one of the advantages of having a new polyurethane running surface. Now, our current track is funded by the school board for fiscal year '22. So, I want to make sure, make it very clear that the track is funded to be resurfaced. However, that funding is based on whatever funding was allocated at the time that they initially decided to fund the resurfacing of the track. That's probably, you know, the way budgets are prepared, probably three to five years old. Right now, the amount that was budgeted for the track is definitely insufficient for what we need to have done with our track. Due to the pandemic and the issues that we've had with the virus, which has really wrecked havoc with our economy and the academic school year, the rise in cost of the materials and other issues, the price to resurface a track is going up about 30%. Now, what does that 30% equate to? In 2017, Gainesville High School resurfaced their track. Gainesville High School is in our district. So, automatically, Gainesville High School has an advantage over us because they have a rubberized surface, which allows their athletes to train and not necessarily have to deal with the many injuries that we have to also contend with, such as sheen's plants, which is an ailment that is derived from running on paved surfaces. They don't necessarily have that to deal with. But when they resurfaced their track in back in 2017, it cost approximately $300,000. What does that equate to terms for us? That means that's four years ago, plus we have a pandemic, which caused prices to increase, the different conditions for the asphalt has gone up. If you want to build a house now, it's far more expensive to build a house now than it was a year ago. So, just imagine how much it has gone up. When you're talking about trying to resurface a polyurethane track or to replace a track that's asphalt, I suspect that it will cost at least $600,000 now to do what we need to do at Columbia High School, to make sure that we're on competitive and equal grounds with the other schools in our district. Now, I have five different reasons in which I believe that it should be necessary and prudent for us to go ahead and resurface the track now. And I'm not going to take too long to go through these five. The main advantage, one of the advantages for funding it this year is that we're going to be able to start generating revenue by hosting track and field meets. That means putting heads in beds at hotels and putting feet underneath tables at restaurants. The second reason, it will help our student athletes operate on equal footing with other programs in our district, Gainesville High School, Leon, Waukulla, Lincoln. They all have rubberized track surfaces, so they have a competitive advantage over us. Third, by hosting meets locally, it will allow our student athletes to perform here at home, where family, friends, and relatives can actually get a chance to see them compete. When was the last time we had a track meet here at Columbia High? Nobody can remember because it's been that long. Fourth, it will generate revenue because you're going to have people come to the stadium. Outside of football games, now you will have access to revenue at the gates, the ticket sales, concessions, and it will allow the track team and the booster clubs to seek sponsorships, which will help us when it comes time to purchase additional equipment and resources that we need for our track and our cross-country teams. It'll help us be more self-sufficient and autonomous. But finally, it will position Columbia High School to take advantage of our geographical location and access from all directions, north, south, east, and west, our hotels, our restaurants, and the openness of the school site. Columbia High School is an open site. Now, if you take into consideration some of the conditions surrounding the pandemic, that open area is very conducive for us being able to conduct and host track meets. It's not like Gainesville High School where it's within the city confines. It's very restricted, it's very tight, limited seating. You won't have those issues and those concerns at CHS. I believe that if we go ahead and fund the resurfacing of the track now, it will allow for Lake City to become a hub for large-scale track meets, which will generate thousands, if not millions of dollars. That is not out of the question by us being able to host track and field meets. So, you might be wondering, County Commissioner, what is my request of you all? My request is very simple. If you, as members of the County Commissions, would coordinate with the Columbia County School Board for the complete funding of our track. Now, that does not mean I'm putting the whole burden on the County Commissioners. What it does mean, though, is you, as County Commissioners, encourage other businesses, for instance, Anderson, Columbia, potential donors and contributors, whether they be business or private donors, to, you know, encourage them to contribute to this effort. I believe a collective effort utilizing all of the resources of the county will limit the amount of financial burden on any one entity. But it will allow all of us to benefit from a new and modern track and immediately put us in a position where we can start hosting track meets at Columbia High School. Imagine if the next graduation at Columbia High School, you have a nice, modern, polyurethane track in which you have the football field, and you'll be able to see that pleasing and aesthetic appearance of having that new track there. Now, in your packets, I added a series of pictures. Two of the pictures show what our track looks like now. You will see the grass growing through, you see the faded lines. But that third picture is the picture of what we hope that the track will look like if it's resurfaced. And I do believe that a quality academic institution such as Columbia High School should have a track that is commensurate with our standard and the high quality of education that we provide our high school students. I believe that the resurfacing of the track will be commensurate with us being able to move our program forward. We could get more scholarships because our teams will be able to be competitive with other schools in our district. Subject to any questions are the comments by Ms. Chancy. Well, I got through it and did no additional comments. She's very good at helping me get through things and making sure I don't miss points. So, but subject to your questions, if you have any questions, I'm open to any comments that you may have.
Coach, meeting that I was invited to, that you invited me at the First Federal, and myself, Paula, and several others attended, the number at that time, don't I recall somewhere around 300? What evolved further research or what's other than the pandemic?
Right, the $300,000. Currently, the track is funded just under $300,000 for fiscal year '22. So, let's be clear on that, it is funded, but only for about $300,000. Now, if you take into just the cost of the increases over the last few years for the materials and whatnot, the asphalt, even if you take into contingency, a 10% contingency fund for each year is going up. So, what was $300,000, in my estimation right now, is about $400,000. That includes the resources, the materials, that the, there are certain sanctions, sections that require certifications. Those certifications for the quality of the track cost money. All those things were not considered when that track was initially set to be funded. And also remember, that track right now currently is a 440-yard track. Most tracks are now 400-meter tracks. So, there's a conversion factor that has to go into it. That was probably not considered at the time that they made the budget for the resurfacing of the track. A lot of those things were not considered, they probably didn't have someone who had, say, subject matter expertise at the time that they were allocating the budget. So, when they said $300,000 at that particular time, that probably was sufficient, but it's only sufficient for the replacing of the asphalt, okay? The milling and the removal of the old asphalt track and the putting down of new asphalt, that will cover about $300,000. That has nothing to do, it would not, that's where that shortfall comes in. It will not cover the resurfacing of the track. That's the part where we need help. So, the school has done a good job of allocating funds, but those funds are not going to be sufficient to put us in a position where we can be competitive with other schools in our district.
Okay, I guess I just missed it that night because I was under the assumption when the company did their proposal, that that was their product inclusive called $300,000. No, but I understand what you're saying.
That is, yeah, you, I was under that same impression at first. But when the bids were submitted, and if you look over the bids that have been submitted to us, the average bid submittal is over $600,000. And it includes the milling and removal of the old asphalt. Now, here's where, like I said, if we get that support from the County Commissioners, if we can somehow convince Anderson, Columbia to reduce the cost of the asphalt, that could go a tremendous way towards putting us in a position where what we have allocated is more reasonable, and it may not require as much support from, say, the city, County Commissioners, TDC. TDC has also provided some support and help if they're willing to. First Federal Bank has pledged a certain amount of money as well. But we're going to need a little bit of a more sizable contribution in order for us to really be what we need to be.
So, you have went back to the, I know you've initially presented to the TDC, you went back since then?
Yes, sir.
And they have committed support?
They have committed support, and I believe it's actually in your packet. Their support, right now, it may look like only 21,000. However, we do believe that there may be additional funds that might come from the TDC. And again, the TDC is kind of like waiting to see what other entities will be willing to do, including private donors like Mr. Patel. Because if we resurface this track, his hotels are going to benefit from this. So, we're looking at maybe some private donors stepping up to the plate as well.
So, when will you have a firm quote?
I've got three bids now.
Oh, do you?
I've got three bids right now, and each one of those bids, like I said, is about $600,000. What has been allocated is just a little under $300,000. But like I said, I believe that by the time we ask the school board to really pony up, they may be willing to come up with a little bit more. But right now, what they have allocated is just a little under $300,000.
That was my next question, was the school board willing to come up any?
Well, I can't speak for the school board to the extent that I know exactly how much they will come up, but I do know that they're going to, they've been very supportive, and they're going to be willing to do whatever they can to try and help us. But the school board is going to need help, hence why, here today, we're going to need help.
The media, I said they were the school board, and you were there. If I understood them right, they committed $200,000.
Who?
The school board. They committed $200,000.
What they're going to do, the monies that they're talking about, they've allocated for fiscal year '22, they're willing to take portion of what they have allocated for fiscal year '22 and move that forward to this year if we were able to generate enough support.
Yeah, well, that number was $200,000.
It's close to $200,000, yeah.
So, in my mind, it really is a school board issue. However, if you can make the TDC tie, if the, this is what makes, this is what puts it in our realm as a... To me, anytime I commit taxpayer dollar to something like this, I want to see return on investment. And I actually think, I actually think, me personally, that this investment is better coming from the Tourist Development Council versus the County Commissioners. But, and maybe we can help you with that as well. But if you can legitimately show that tie of bringing tournaments in, that's a reality, beds and heads, then I think it's a TDC issue, and I think maybe we can help you with their, more support from them and get you where you need to be.
In our briefing to them, that came up, Ms. Chancy and I, we have a follow-up with them. And at that point in time, we will be able to show them how we believe that we will be able to host track meets. That is the next step for us. When is that date, the 27? I think the 27. But we are going back before the TDC to kind of see if we can actually show them. Now, I have the ability to be able to go into a system called Direct Athletics, that's where I schedule all of the track meets. Now, we have not been able to go into that particular system and schedule any home meets simply because we don't have the facilities or equipment or the track to host a home meet. But at that point in time, if we did have the capability to host a meet, I can schedule as many track meets as I want in that system. And the location of Columbia High School is such that all of the schools in our district would rather come here versus going to Gainesville, it's too tight there. And also, because of the restrictions in Tallahassee, they would rather come here versus having to go all the way down to Gainesville as well. We're in a central location. But not only will we be able to host meets here for our district rivals, but when you go into that system, you can make it an open invitation. Schools within a two-hour radius will be coming here. And we can identify exactly how long and how many days we want a meet to be. So, we can actually make it overnight, have it on a Saturday so they have to arrive on a Friday. So, that's a night in a hotel. So, we can take advantage of, you know, the ability to actually schedule meets.
I think that's your avenue, I think certainly we may could help you out with there's some private donations, maybe we could send a formal request to Anderson, Columbia on your behalf because all the work they do for us, things like that. But 21,000 seems pretty low from our TDC if the reality of heads in beds is there. So, if you can work that number out and sell that, it's the same thing we do with the... So if you can work that number out and sell that, you know, it's the same thing we do with the baseball and softball. It's a, you know, it, it's, we get far much more back from it than we put in it, so.
Yes, and, and, uh, we do believe that the TDC will be, that number, I believe that that number came from, uh, an initial, you know, uh, uh, distribution of funds and was also, uh, based on the fact that they were limited on what funds they have access to at this time of the year because of, you know, fiscal year budget and shortfalls and, and where they are in the fiscal year. But yes, I, I, they, they've been very supportive of us.
Go ahead, Commissioner Williams.
Uh, Mr. Lawrence, David, the, uh, i- i- it's unfortunate, uh, we're in a, in a time like we are now. This board have had a history of assisting, uh, the school system in, in Columbia County over the years. Uh, you might not be aware of this, but Mr. Mark built the tennis court, the new tennis court, the additional tennis court that was, uh, was built at, uh, at the, uh, high school. And back in those days, we had special project fund. Each commissioner had their, their, their own money to spend on special proj- project. I put a hundred thousand dollars and redid the football field, uh, uh, my special project money. But those dollars have dried up. We reorganized. Now we don't have that luster of having, uh, special project money each individual, uh, commissioner. And, uh, so that, that is gone. Any money that this board give towards any activity now have to come through the board during the budget process. Uh, and, and, and we talk about the TDC, uh, you got to realize the TDC have just bought five hundred acres, uh, to build a flat field complex, and their money gonna be tied up, so they're gonna be sort of kind of a minimum of what they can do looking forward to developing the flat field on that five hundred acres that, uh, TDC have just bought. So the more that we can encourage private business to contribute to that project, I mean, I'm just blown away now. The last time we talked, I, 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 I thought we were talking about two hundred fifty, three hundred thousand dollars. Now we up to six hundred fifty thousand dollars, so we a long way from where you need to be to get what you need.
Yes, sir.
And that, so it's gonna take, uh, a lot of, of private, uh, donations from corporations to help you raise that money to do so. The school board should be aggressive in going out, having to solicit those, uh, private organizations and, and as, uh, Mr. Whip said, that we as a board can also, uh, 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 help solicit, uh, private enterprise to help with that.
And we think that's, that kind of support, uh, is, uh, critical to us being able to generate that support, that, that, that additional revenue. Uh, that number is not going away for us to be able to do what we need to do. Uh, if we don't do it now, it's gonna have to be done later. And it'll probably cost more. Each year that we wait to resurface that track, it's, it's gonna, the, the cost is gonna increase. So my recommendation is that we somehow or another acquired the funds to resurface that track this year rather than next year because the, the cost of that track is not gonna go down.
And, and that's some of the problem, uh, commissioners with, with TDC. We, we've already budgeted everything for this fiscal year, and he wants to try to do this by June. And we're trying to find the money in the budget to, to help him out. You know, I, I, I think thirty thousand is the number I heard at the last TDC meeting. It's about what maximum we're gonna be able to do for this fiscal year. Because we don't have any budget, you know, it's not in the budget for this year.
Yeah, and, and thirty thousand is, is a, uh, a high jump map, landing map.
But that's still a long ways from six hundred thousand where you're at.
Yes, sir. Long way.
You know? Uh.
So this is twenty twenty-two, June of twenty twenty-two.
Correct.
So you're saying in your next budget cycle, all you got?
Well, he, he was wanting to do it by June of this year, from what I understood.
The reason, yes, I, I wanted to try and do it by June of this year because the total time length of the project is about forty-five days. And that includes a, a, a seven to fourteen day curing period, once that, once that, uh, polyurethane surface is down on the ground. Uh, it really only takes about thirty days for them to actually put it in, but you know, you want to make sure it cures. And in hot, uh, Florida sun, seven to fourteen days is long enough. But what, what that would do if we were able to do it this year, that means August, September timeframe, I'm able to start hosting meets, which means I'm generating revenue. I'm generating income. Um, we're putting money, you know, heads in bed, feet on the, on the tables.
But, but David, this is gonna be hard for any agency to have a budget.
At this time.
Budget that was, that we're working on it now was, 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 uh, 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 was, uh, during the pandemic of last year. So all budgets were short anyways. And, uh, to be able to, to say, I want to do it by this coming June, this is gonna be almost impossible. From budget standpoint where you got government agencies had a thin budget to start with. Uh, and, 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 and now we are, we are about midway to have a two thousand twenty-one, two thousand, uh, twenty-two budget. Uh, it, it's gonna, it's, it, it, it's gonna be a tough road to hope.
Yes, sir. Uh, we, we understand that. We understood it, uh, once we decided to, the, the booster and I myself, uh, when we, uh, said, hey, look, let's, let's try and get it done this year. We, we understood that. And, um, we know it's an uphill battle. Uh, but even if, even if we wait, even if we wait, the cost of this project is not going down. And, uh, it's almost kind of like, if, if you don't do it now, you're gonna do it later. Uh, and, and if, and if it's done later, it's gonna cost probably ten percent more ni- uh, next year. Um, we might have access to some of the COVID nineteen, uh, COVID nineteen funds that I heard earlier, you know, you, uh, I don't know if there's a way in which we could do some, uh, hosting at the track and testing at the track, uh, you know?
I've checked with county manager every, and we, we've looked at every way you can do it, and it just don't qualify to use that money on this project.
And y'all's data research, uh, some of the comparable schools that you said had this, uh, type of track, uh, have y'all gotten any income data off any of the, uh, track meets that they've done?
Yes. The last meet that we went to, uh, actually, uh, would have been the district meet, but, but I wouldn't count them because that's kind of like a, uh, a, you know, an all hands meet. But, uh, Santa Fe High School, we, we, they have a rubberized track as well. But when we go to their particular meet, uh, with, uh, concessions, ticket, uh, sales, you're talking about ten thousand dollars. Easy, uh, per day.
For me, and they, they hosted five or six this past spring track season.
Oh, yeah, well, yeah, yeah. Uh, once you get a track down, you can host as many meets as, as you have the time to do. And at each one of them, you're gonna get about ten thousand dollars. Track is, uh, is, is something that is, is, uh, is, is getting bigger and bigger. One, because it's an outside activity. And, uh, you don't necessarily have some of the con- uh, the concerns being on the outside as you would have an in, uh, uh, an event on the inside like a basketball game or, or something of that nature. It's outside, um.
Working towards an AAU track team as well in Columbia County, which is a travel, much like travel softball or baseball. Um, so it'll be bringing year-round AAU track meets to Columbia County as well.
We just need the facility and the, uh, the site. We have the site itself. We just don't have the tracker at the site.
And how's the Gainesville school, high school and people like that, did they, how'd they fund it?
How do they fund it? The, the, uh, the school board, the Lash County School Board funded the resurfacing of all of the, the, uh, 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 tracks in Gainesville. And in addition, they contracted out with a local vendor for the asphalt. So the three hundred was the resurfacing of track, but they have, uh, a, a, a different, a, a separate contract for the asphalt. So I don't, not, not exactly sure what that contract was, but on the average, it's about a hundred thousand dollars, uh, to mill and put down new asphalt for a track. And that, and they did all the, uh, I think two tracks, two or three tracks in, in Gainesville.
Oh, we both, this is just.
It's a discussion.
Tonight, so you know, we won't be voting on anything.
Correct.
We will be seeing where you're, where it goes, and if we can help you in any way, we, we will. But I don't know if you paid any attention to our meetings this morning on the budget, but we're, we're gonna, we have, we have a major payroll issue too with the county at this time that we've got to resolve. I, and, and we, and we just don't know where the money's coming from at this point.
The, the, the one thing, like I said, uh, uh, you can't really put a price on influence. And the county does have some influence. You may not have the, the kind of funds this year, but it's, it's that influence and, and knowing that the, uh, individual within your respective, uh, districts that, uh, may have the capability to help, uh, fund, uh, this project, that's also something that's, uh, uh, useful for us. Uh, being able to reach out and touch base with those, those individuals, those companies, those businesses, they, and, and ask, and telling them, encouraging them to, to support this effort because it's gonna benefit many of them in the long run as soon as we can get that track res- resurfaced.
Well, I think, I think you're hearing we're willing to help you. I mean, I, I, do I think you can get there next month or July? No. Do I think you can get there next year? Yeah, I think you got, I, I think you can. I think it's doable. So, um, we'll do what we can for you.
Well, you know, I, I, I'm a coach, so if I can get it done this year, I'm, I'm happy to get it done this year because I know I can start generating, uh, income. If it has to wait till next year because we just can't squeeze, uh, that money out, then, uh, then we, then we wait till next year. But again, um, that's gonna require the Columbia County School Board to actually increase their funding because again, the actual cost is, is more along the lines of about six hundred thousand dollars versus what they have currently budgeted. So I'll still be maybe coming back before you guys say, hey, well, what can you do for us in a year?
We, 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 we understand that.
We had a bitter oversight of what the shortfall is coming out of Tallahassee be then, to be able to make an intelligent decision then.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all. Appreciate it. Thank you for the time.
Thanks, sir.
We appreciate what you're doing with the kids.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move, we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Consent agenda.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approval of consent agenda? Or adoption of consent agenda, I'm sorry. And, uh, at this time, we'll take a vote on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Foreman.
Mr. Chair, is it acceptable if I address from here?
Yes, sir.
I've been sitting there in the corner for so long.
I think we can hear you better.
Probably better, yeah. And, and it's probably good if you can't see me as much. Um, Commissioners, this is a, a request to set an adoption hearing for some revisions to the county citation ordinance. We discussed it at a prior meeting before you instructed me to go forward. Uh, I'm merely asking for a motion to set the, uh, adoption hearing, uh, for June, first meeting in June.
First meeting in June?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, for the record, the first meeting is June, it's June third.
June third. Boy, that goes sharp down there.
Mr. Chair, the, uh, second issue I have on the agenda for this evening is a, is a, a new one. Um, Commissioner Murphy, um, County Manager Kraus and, uh, Ms. Sally Ford from the, uh, uh, Health Department all had a chance to meet, I think mine, was it just last week, Commissioner Murphy? I think that's right.
Thanks, sir.
Um, there is a loophole in our current code. Uh, and I kind of spelled out the fact pattern in the memo that I included with the, uh, with the item. But essentially, someone can go get a power pole and say, hey, I'm just gonna run a well to, to water my horses or I'm just gonna run a power pole for a, for a storage shed or something like that. They go down and certify that to the Health Department. Health Department gives them a waiver, says, oh, you don't need a septic tank for that purpose, so you go ahead and get your power pole. And that's what our code calls for right now. The problem is, and, and, and it's occurred because, uh, Ms. Ford told us it's occurred, um, people will get that power pole and then a couple of years later, I'm gonna go ahead and build me a house or I'm gonna go ahead and build me a tiny house or whatever they're gonna do. Um, they go forward. They don't have a permitted septic tank at that time. It's discovered that they've done this, and the only thing Ms. Ford can do under statute is tell them, hey, you've got to come down and pull a septic tank permit. That's all she's authorized to do the way it's written right now. The only one who can create an additional requirement for her, according to her, is Board of County Commissioners. What we need to have happen in that scenario, somebody gets cited under that scenario, you, you're, you're operating without a septic tank or you've got an unpermitted septic tank, you've got to come down and cure that up. We want Ms. Ford to send those folks back across the hall to make sure they actually have building permits for what they've constructed on their property. Because right now, there's no check in the system to require her. She, she actually can't do it. So under statute, she's got to issue the septic permit once they come into compliance. But we can create the additional step of demonstrating building code compliance, which will cure a lot of this issue. We, we won't have so many unpermitted structures that are being serviced by permitted septic tanks. So it's a check that we need to fill that loophole, and that's what I'm proposing, uh, we draft into the code.
So councilor, currently, in that scenario, they go pull a permit, they have to, they have to put in an approved septic tank at that time right now, right? Or they can never go with that homemade septic tank?
Correct. If they're running a cesspool or if they've had a septic tank, and again, getting a septic tank put in without a permit is virtually impossible. But I mean, if somebody manages to pull that off, right, and, and Ms. Ford finds out about it, she violates them. You know, you're operating without a, without a permit, uh, you know, a septic or a cesspool. She forces them to come into compliance, but that, that has nothing to do with building code. So whatever structures they've constructed on the hat, on the property that are using the septic tank, we have no idea whether they're in building code compliance or not. Most of them will not be permitted under this scenario. Um, so that's how you end up with structures that are constructed that we don't know about it, county doesn't know about it, property appraiser doesn't know about it. Um, and we have no idea if it's up to building code.
And one of the issues that brought this forward, if I may, Joel.
Yes, sir.
The issue I'm dealing with on two forty, where, uh, you got a group of people just went out and bought land and they're living in tents and ambulances and whatever they can put their head in. And so, of course, Sally Ford, uh, upon my asking, I said, would you at least go check this place out? My understanding, they're dumping waste all over the ground. And they were, they told her they were. Uh, and they were actually bagging it up and putting in, uh, the garbage that they don't pay a garbage assessment for. So the, uh, so they discovered that, well, there's supposed to be a septic tank here. They hired a company out of, uh, Live Oak over there, very reputable company, come forth, certified it, said, yeah, this is a good septic tank. So, but that ain't the end of the game because, you know, they don't have a, uh, temporary RV permit, uh, no building plan. He can't give a temporary, temporary RV permit in Columbia County if you follow the rules without a set of plans of what your desires and your needs, you know, what you plan on doing on this parcel of property. So Sally definitely, uh, encouraged and, and supported the fact that, for you, if they come to me for a septic tank, they simply go over there, tell building and zoning, I guess, Mr. Stug or whoever it may be, is that, this is my plan for this property. Okay, you're gonna do this, this and this. Okay, will you meet that? Sure, you go get you a septic tank. And there's totally a, I believe in Joel's, uh, deal here is, uh, you know, it gives an exception to the, uh, the cattleman, if you want to say, that's just needing to put a well down, uh, just to, uh, you know, water the cows and what have you, don't mess with agricultural side of it. But it puts a, i- i- it deals with these, what each one of us, I guarantee you, has or will deal with as far as, you know, RVs just showing up. And I have no problem with RVs showing up and living there for a year as long as they go by the criteria. But, you know, nobody can afford to have constituents on both sides. You know, when you got somebody that buys piece of property on the internet, don't even, didn't even know where Columbia County was when he got here. And, uh, i- i- and there's, there's just no checks and balances here. And, uh, and, and Mr. Cruz was on a, uh, phone call during that. And, uh, and last year, David can attest to this, an issue we ran into at Southwood Meadows. Him and Ben went down there one day at lunch, and I think we picked up eleven, ten or eleven, uh, dwellings down there that weren't even paying the track trash assessment. So there's a lot of money out there, and I'm not after the dollar. I'm just after everybody doing it correctly. And, uh, you know, because, uh, of course, poor Rocky Ford, I don't think he could pay me two hundred thousand to do what he does under four white because he's got a lot of these issues there. And it's not that we're going out targeting people, but, you know, you can't have issues like this, what's going on, you know, that I'm dealing with right now, and I'm sure all y'all dealt with something similar to it. And, but I, I thought it was very encouraging that Ms. Ford, uh, who is not Rocky's wife, uh, the, uh, you know, she, she, she felt like it was. know, she felt like it was a necessary eagle to be able to help her department. So you're wanting action tonight to draft this ordinance, and you draft this ordinance, you're going to include the exemptions for agriculture that are, and so this will come back for us in that form, and we can debate it then?
Yes, sir. This is the very, very first, we sort of identify the problem, and what I would like the board to do, if it's the board's pleasure, is tell me to go work on something to fill the hole, and then bring it back to y'all for, just as we're doing the citation ordinance, I'll bring it back and ask for an adoption hearing date, have a chance to review it.
And as Sally said, one thing that was very important to me, it will not slow down the process of a man getting a septic tank permit to do what the people at Rocky's son-in-law has to deal with every day. And that was very important on my part.
We have one comment, call Mr. Looker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regarding the septic tank, I just have a question. Don't you need a permit from the Swan River Water Management District to install a septic tank?
No.
No?
You need a permit from the Health Department, from Tom's office. Well, he's not here.
He's not there.
The State Health Department, they have offices in every county, and they issue septic tank permits and inspect the septic tanks when they're putting in and handle all the permitting.
I mean, I don't know this stuff, so if I wanted to put in a septic tank, I would have to go to the Health Department and get a permit.
Yep.
Mr. Looker, here is how it works. You got to have a septic tank. You go to the Health Department. The Health Department send their inspectors out, if you want to call them inspectors. They take a pair of pole soil diggers and they dig a hole. And the contest of that hole, or the soil analysis that comes out that hole, tell you whether you need a mound, whether you need a mound one foot high or four foot high. And that's why you see these mounds behind people's homes, they have those septic tanks up where they pump the water into that mound, because you got the soil beneath the ground that will not percolate. So the only people approve that is the Health Department. And then once the Health Department approves that, then you get a permit to take to a septic tank or person, and they give them that permit, then they know how to build that septic tank.
Put it in.
Meet no guideline.
Because those guys have to have licenses, I guess, right? They need a license also to install it?
Yeah, the septic tank people are licensed.
Yeah. The installer for septic tanks are licensed.
So what, just another question. So what will this prevent now?
Okay, what we're trying to prevent, what we're trying to prevent is people going out and getting a septic tank permit with no building permit or other permit from the Building Department and putting a septic tank in and just living on the property with a septic tank.
So normally, the contractor, in other words, you, if you did the septic tank, you would have to get a permit from the Building Department.
We don't have to get a permit from the Building Department to do a septic tank. All we do is get a permit from the Health Department.
Real simple, Stu. You can go out there tomorrow, you can go out and buy 30 acres. Hey, I need a power pole up because I need it to help me while I'm out there clearing my land, getting ready to build a house one day. Okay, so boom. So the next thing, you go out and you start doing your thing, then they jump right down there and go to Sally Ford and say, I want to get, put a septic tank in because, you know, I'm going to build me a little outdoor something or other to go to the bathroom while I'm out there building in my, you know, cleaning my land. Well, the next thing you know, there's a little 10 by 10 or 12 by 12 building from Bam Buildings or whoever may sell one out there, and they're living in it. Ain't no trash assessment. It falls under the minimum 400 square feet, must be livable space, and it doesn't beat no Florida codes or, you know, county codes or nothing. And so they bypass the system, then the next thing you know, you got what I've got on one street down there and what Mr. Ford's got on a bunch of streets down there, and every commissioner in this district, you know, we deal with that. And my whole point is that when I first got introduced to this about two and a half years ago, you got a man's got a $750,000 house here, and then he's beautiful place. Then over here, you got somebody's got a $3,500 shed that doesn't meet no codes, no compliances, no nothing, never got a permit, nothing. So that's, this is a beginning step to try to alleviate some of that problem.
But so far, just so I understand that, I appreciate the explanation, I could still get a power pole if I had blank acreage, and I could still get a permit to put in a septic tank?
But you have to go back to the Building Department to get that permit, is what they're trying to do.
For the septic tank?
That way, the Building Department will know you're putting a septic tank on this property that was permitted for agriculture.
So this would just be an extra step? Because if I hired you to put in the septic tank, then I wouldn't need a permit, you could just do it?
No, no, no.
No?
This puts a step in to have them get LDR compliance certification from the Building Department before the Health Department will issue that septic tank permit.
Basically, what we're trying to do is eliminate unpermitted buildings. Commissioner Williams, you had a question?
And you got a catch 20 here. And I don't want to vote for fucking going negate a person that want a temporary permit to put in a camper trailer while he's building, when he build a house. I think it should be temporary, and once he or she does not comply with the temporary permit, then it then is shut down.
That's right.
But I want to make sure that a person that want to utilize building a house, we just had one, Joe, you worked through with this not too often long ago in my district right down from me, where the neighbors were complaining about him living in a mobile home, and he was going to do a, going to take building the house itself, so it's going to take longer for him to build his house than a contractor building it. But he's in the process of building his house, it's going to take longer. And I don't want to do anything to stop a person from doing that.
And this definitely won't, I support that 100%.
Because he'll have a building permit.
But we'll get a bite at that apple because we're talking about something that's not even drafted yet. When he drafts that, you can put that in there, and we can sit down at that time and debate this and make sure all your concerns such as that are addressed.
All we're doing right now is okaying him to draw something up for us to look at.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Okay, can I get a motion for that?
Mr. Chairman, I authorize the county attorney. I make a motion to authorize the county attorney to provide an ordinance requiring owners obtained LDR compliance certifications verified by the county Building Department prior to issuance of a septic tank permit.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Commissioner, there was one addition that was under me. If it's pleased to the board, I'll go ahead and handle it.
You want to address that now? That's fine.
Yes, sir. What you have here with the Tate Acres subdivision, it's an older subdivision. Most of the property was owned among family, and as families tend to do, they've kind of moved the property around. And as it turns out, Mr. Edward Tate, who's asked to vacate a portion of subdivision, actually owns all of one lot and part of two other lots. And so long as it's kind of this piecemeal cut out of the subdivision, he can't actually get a building permit because he's got an illegal subdivision. The way to cure that is to vacate that portion of the subdivision out, it's called a partial vacation, and return the land to acreage, and then he will be eligible for a building permit because he's got sufficient acreage. So his family and he have filed a notice of intent to vacate, they gave good due notice in the Lake City Reporter, and the only thing that's necessary is for the board under Chapter 177 to bless that partial vacation. So again, this is only carving out his southeast corner of Tate Acres. There is no, there are no public right of ways or county roads that are affected by this.
And this is all family, Joe?
It's family, mostly family in the subdivision, but again, no other property within the subdivision accesses across his property or uses his property for anything. It's the southeast corner of the subdivided land, and he has access through an easement. So it will not affect any other landowner in the property.
How large is this?
About five acres.
Where's that?
It's in Commissioner Williams' district.
Do we have anybody here to speak on this? Would you like to come up and speak at this time?
Hi, my name is Crystal Constance, and I'm just here on the behalf of Mr. Tate because he's a truck driver and he's over the road down, so I can answer any questions that I have. Crystal Constance.
Do you have any issues with doing this?
No.
Okay, so you're here.
I don't either, Mr. Chairman. You know, I think it doesn't hurt anything by vacating.
This is Edward Tate, right?
Yes.
Yeah, we went to school.
So you make a motion?
Yes, sir. So I move the request.
Second. It's okay. Thank you, thank you. I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Mr. Kirby.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have two items for consideration, Mr. Chairman. With your permission, I'll take care of that housekeeping issue of that add-on at the The first item is bid number 2021-03-242 West. We received one bid. It was from Anderson Columbia Company at $1,31,191,28, $191.28. This is from Brantford Highway 247 to the county line. Recommended motion to approve the bid and contract the sole bidder of Anderson Columbia in the amount of $1,31,191.28.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve bid number 2021-0-3.
Second. Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
The second item is Emerald Lake Subdivision MSBU. Request has been made to install four additional streetlights to be added to this subdivision. It is inclusive in the recalculation of the non-advisory assessment for fiscal year 2122. Back in February of 14, the board waived the required voting requirements and approved the MSBU. In accordance with county ordinance number 202027, to install the four new streetlights, the board must waive the required vote and determine the streetlight directed benefits the safety and welfare of the public.
This is in my district, and they've been having things stolen out of their mailboxes. I've talked to everybody where the streetlight is going to be. They want them, and it is a safety issue, and, you know, if I need to make a motion.
Make the motion.
I move that we waive the vote and approve the installation and assessment for four additional streetlights for public safety.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Kevin, you want to go ahead and address the DOT?
Yes, sir.
Project reprioritization for the roads?
Yes, sir. Yesterday during our workshop, we were discussing many items, the issue of State Road 6 came up, as I was asked by this board at an earlier meeting. I told you at that time, the DOT is willing to allow us to resubmit the prioritization list for this fiscal year for scraps, cop, and safety. As you know, there's three projects. A while ago, I wanted to get some assurance, I text program coordinator as it related with us the drop dead date if this board so chooses to resubmit. Their work program begins July, as long as we, if this board so chooses. If they want to resubmit, as long as we do it prior to July, that's acceptable. So you have tonight's meeting, you have two more meetings before that date. So at that point, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to leave that up to y'all. If y'all want to address that tonight, if y'all want to come back at one of the next two meetings, or if y'all don't want to do it at all.
Give us the name of the roads that's going to be on the list.
Name of the roads are on the list.
You want the, based on the consensus of this board, the proposed roads on that list or the current roads?
No, the roads that you, you're going to present if you re-operate.
If I re, if I think I understand what you want, you're going to put State Road 6 at the top, and then you have two other roads, County Road 133 or Country Club Road from 252 to US 90, Burley Road from 242 West that we're talking about repaving to the Pine Mount Road. Those will be your three new proposed roads, new proposed roads.
So as you propose them, Kevin, that's, you're saying that they look at that as a priority?
No, sir. But obviously, that's why we're here, is State Road 6. No, sir, they don't look at it in a numerical order, if that's your question. But obviously, if we're resubmitting after we've already submitted, one would logically assume that's why we're resubmitting.
Road 6 is going to be our priority. Okay.
So if they put it in there, Kevin, and they award it, then it would be the decision of this board whether or not we front the money to be returned, as you explained yesterday in 2025, was it?
Or we can wait till they prove it.
So they're here, so I explain it properly. We are simply submitting. We have not got anything. But based on the fact that we feel important enough that we're resubmitting and doing what we're doing, they have promised me they're going to take a close look at it. So then we'll have the option, if it makes the cut, that's a big question. If it makes the cut, it's either 24 or 25, as you indicated, that's when that say it makes the cut. Boom, we get the job. 24, 25, those funds will be available to do the project. However, they're willing to be flexible. If we so, which is not, the norm is you don't do the project till the money's available. They are willing to be flexible because of the condition of this road, if this board funds that project immediately, this year, and a project worth about two and a half million dollars for the road only. That's your next question.
So I think the motion should be to resubmit the list with the new priority, not committing any money to this project at this time.
But you're not.
So basically, we're not, we're not saying, go ahead and pave the road and we'll refund the money, don't refund the money.
What I would recommend.
All we're doing is resubmitting our list.
You have to resubmit. If you resubmit the list, then when they reach back out, as I say, it made it, then I'll come back in front of this board, say, do you wish to go ahead and pave it now, fund it now, understand you'll get reimbursement at a later date?
I move that we resubmit the list for funding.
I'll second, and then I got discussion. I have no, I have no issue with doing this, with doing the list and with the process because they're willing to make an exception on this road that they're not usually willing to do, where we can go ahead and fix our safety issue and pay for it years down. I do have concerns, which is why I voted in the beginning of this meeting, that if this isn't a time-sensitive meeting issue, that we're, it just seems we're getting a little overboard with some of these walk-ons to the agenda. And I think we could have, I mean, Mr. Kirby, yesterday, you know, I think we were convinced, based on the information you had yesterday, this may be an emergency item, but we've got information it's not. I just caution the board that let's stop these walk-ons and get public comment. The issue we just voted on, I can see that's a closed family issue, really doesn't have a lot of outside public concern, that might be time-sensitive, she's fine, but, you know, I know, I'm not even the commissioner in that district, and I get calls about State Road 6. So you very well could have public here wanting to come in and comment. If this board was maybe going to lean the other way, you may have public wanting to come here and comment and say, hey, this is a priority.
And I agree, Commissioner, we need to start taking a closer look at what we're putting, adding on to the agenda. And I will commit, we'll do that, start doing that in the future. It only add time-sensitive issues and non-budgetary items.
With this issue here, and I already interrupted what Toby said and Rock, you know, it gives the people an opportunity, the constituents in the community, and there may not, nobody show up because if most people ride down Road 6, they're going to realize they're going to get the head beat off. But I think it's our duty to keep as much transparency and let's keep the community involved in the process of what they do. That's what they elected us to do. It's not time-sensitive, so let's move to the next meeting where the public can have the opportunity to participate.
Well, we have a motion.
We got a motion.
We have a motion. We got a motion and a second. So all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you, gentlemen.
No, he voted, he didn't oppose.
No, no, I didn't oppose.
Oh, you didn't oppose?
Yeah, I didn't oppose.
Oh, I thought you said no.
I'm not against, and just for the record, I'm not against Road 6 project, I'm just, I'm sticking to what I said as far as the, you know, earlier on.
Commissioner, where?
No.
Okay, Mr. Crass.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Murphy?
4 to 1, Mr. Murphy again.
Right.
I understand sometimes that we all... I understand sometimes that we all get caught up in personal vendettas against one another, but it seemed like when it's something concerning District 1, everybody want to be time-sensitive. Well, some want to be time-sensitive and want to drag it out, but by golly, I can feel this damn right. If you want people to come, I can feel this room. So it's not like I can't feel this room when something needs to be done in my district. I can feel it. I can feel it every damn night when it come to District 1. So I'm transparent. I know this, if I go out to the road department and look at complaints that we get, I guarantee you for every 15 I got, you ain't got one on Old Country Club Road.
We didn't talk about it.
No, no, listen to me now. So by God, I'm going to stand up for District 1. Everybody on this board have got calls about State Road 6. And by golly, when here come time to stand up for District 1, I'm going to stand up for it. Now, will it, will it be funded? I don't know, but he'll be on the list to be funded under what we done tonight.
And I don't think anyone expects any different, because I'm going to stand up for District 2, just like you going to stand up.
And I'm going to stand up for District 5 and I can fill this room up too.
Yeah, but here you come to the point, here come to the point, Mr. Murphy, I don't know what took you on a different route, but you not, you used to didn't be like that.
What are you talking about?
You used to didn't be like that.
Okay, okay, that's enough, that's enough.
Commissioner, I just want to clarify.
My, my concern with walking this on the agenda was to protect your point of view in District 1, Ron, and I'm saying this, it wouldn't have happened with this issue, but just hypothetically, if that road project that you support and I support had been, had not had full board support and it was controversial and we didn't have the meeting where the public could come out and speak, you know, that's where you had the problem. It, luckily, it's not the case with this issue, because I think the majority of this board accepts that it's a, it's a situation that needs to be addressed. But what if that wasn't the case? We walk this on the agenda without letting your constituents, because it's in your district, have a say. And that's what I...
They elected me to have a say.
And that's what I want to protect. You know, that's what I want to protect, the ability for you to fill this room when the issue's controversial. Now, luckily, it's not with this, but it very well could have been. And that's why I have a concern with things being walked on the agenda, not, just allow that to happen, to allow you to fill the room, to allow the public to be noticed and have a say. It's not that I disagree with your project. I get calls on State Road 6. I'm one of the ones who get called. I think me and you have a, have a, one of your constituents calls us both on that road. So it's nothing against the project, it's just against the process, that if this had been controversial, you would want this noticed and people to have a say.
And as I just said a minute ago, and I also said in the budget workshop, I support the project of Road 6 getting fixed. I just said publicly, look at the minutes, that I'm voting to stay with my motion of walking issues like this that are not time-sensitive onto the board. I support Road 6. I've got three personal good friends and many friends and many loggers that drive that road each and every day.
Okay. I think everybody's made their statements and I think there was some misunderstandings, but I think everybody's in support of fixing Road 6. I think the question is, is walking stuff on the agenda last minute, it's not time-sensitive. And I think we need to look at that and we will, so at this time, Mr. Krauski would go here.
First item I have is the revision to the administrative code. So the general public knows the county is operated under a charter. We're a charter county. In addition to the charter, we have an administrative code, which dictates how we operate. The charter review committee identified the fact that the administrative code did not match what the operations of the city were doing and that it needed to be looked at to figure out how to make things correct. So we were literally operating in violation of our own administrative code. So we took a look at this, try and make it so that it's consistent with the charter and also to eliminate any redundancies with the charter and also then to straighten out the issues with the county organization so that the administrative code and what the county does on a daily basis operating are consistent, so that we're in compliance with our own administrative code. Having said this, we, I reviewed it. I made a lot of suggested changes. I also ran it past the county attorney, the assistant county manager and the human resources director to make sure if they saw anything that I didn't see, or if there was any other inaccuracies that we needed to fix. And again, the main part of this was to eliminate the redundancies and inconsistencies with the charter. Our administrative code needs to be consistent with the county charter. And the second thing was to eliminate those organizational structure issues that were in the administrative code but weren't being done by the organization itself. So we eliminated the division structure where we used to have three divisions. We eliminated those three divisions because we no longer have those three divisions. We established the assistant county manager positions, because that's currently what we have. And then we also eliminated something that I felt very strongly about, still feel very strongly about, single-person departments. My personal view is that a single-person department really shouldn't be a department. A department should have more personnel, it's more cost-effective, it's easier to manage, it's easier to oversee, it reduces our span of control. Right now, we have 24 departments. This would reduce it down to about 15 departments, well within the normal span of control of one to seven, one to eight departments. So it makes it easier to manage the organization overall and give you a better operating organization. It doesn't mean that people's jobs are being eliminated, it's just a restructuring of the organization to reflect how it is and also to eliminate single-member departments. Those people will still be doing their function, they'll just be part of a larger department. That, if you have any questions.
Commissioner Wits?
Mr. Chairman, I think that staff have done a good job on the reorganization. It comes in line with the charter and what I like about it, there's nobody out there John Wayne-ing. Everybody answer to somebody. And I don't see how you have a one-man department. Somebody should be accountable for, everybody should be accountable to somebody. And at the end, everybody's accountable to you. So it works good that way, in my opinion. And I move we adopt the revised administrative code.
Second. Me.
Any other, I have some comment on here. I have a little issue with, I guess, I just need some understanding of what we're doing with the county attorney having to contract with the separate elected officials to, if he's, if he's attorney for the county, I guess I might have lost with that. I don't understand that. We're paying, we're paying the attorney. Why does he have to contract with elected officials to do work with them?
You want me to address it? Yeah. So, Ms. Chair, the primary issue you have is with the structure of government. You have the county proper and then you have the constitutional officers. And as you know, through the budget process, the constitutional officers are essentially their own agencies. And the way the administrative code has always been written is, and if you go back and look at the red line, it was always within the county attorney's discretion whether or not he wanted to do that. And, you know, no county attorney who enjoys his job, and I do enjoy mine, is going to tell a constitutional no, right? So when former supervisor Horn approached me right after I got elected, hey, we'd really like you to sit with the canvassing board. Well, okay, I'll do that. I think all of you have sat on the canvassing board with me at some point or the other and you know how much work that is. Never really a huge problem, you know, we would rock along. All the time that I would spend on that would go on to the county invoice. Then in 2018, we had a recount. And I would say, in the space of about four or five days, I billed about 60 hours. I mean, it was, were any of you involved in that recount? Did I lose any? I know, I know Commissioner National, oh, that's right, you were the other one who recant. So you remember that. So the issue, Commissioner Ford, it's not about the willingness to do it, it's about what that creates, right? So it looked like I had this massive amount of hours as the county attorney, when in fact, I was representing the supervisor of elections during that canvassing. Again, the way the administrative code was previously written, it was in the discretion of the attorney to do it. Now it says, hey, you can still do it, but if you're going to do it, go contract with that department or with that agency so that you're not bogging down our contract. And that's all, and it can stay the way it is, as far as I'm concerned. I was really just trying to clean up that issue. It's not even about making money. That has nothing to do with it. It's just about cleaning up that issue so that it's clear who I'm working for when different invoices are rendered.
And I see Joel's point exactly, but my only question is, you know, I don't see no statements or backups from constitutional officers. And I just, I got a concern of how they feel about it.
Well, I mean, don't get me wrong, none of us reach out to me, but, but, you know...
And in all fairness, we did not reach out to the constitutional officers.
And again, the only one, the sheriff had used me prior and he still uses me from time to time for forfeiture issues only. And then other than that, it's only been the supervisor. I think I might have handled four or five questions for the clerk in the last six years. So it's not, it's not even a big issue. And I'm okay with just completely, Commissioner, excuse me, county manager asked me, hey, how would you tweak this up? I know how to tweak it up. So that's what you're looking at.
Are you, are you required to be there when the judge is there or that she just asked you to be there?
I'm only there because the supervisor asked me to be there.
I sat there this year, I've done, and Judge Feigl was there some, Judge Tom Coleman. So I guess that was my question. Are you, do you, are you, are you not required to be there?
I'm not required to be there. I will tell you that in most counties, the county attorney will be present. And again, every other county has an appointed county attorney. So that would be something where the board of county commissioners would say, hey, go help out the supervisor with her election. But again, yeah, the only, and I make that very clear, the only reason I'm there is because the supervisor asked me to be there. If she asks me to leave, I leave.
I would just, that was my question. I mean, my only question was, you said that she asked you to be there. I was wondering if you were required.
I'm not statutorily required to be there.
Because I know there was, every time I was there, there was a judge there also.
And the judge is statutorily required to be there, or the commission, the canvassing board is the, is a judge, a county commissioner and the supervisor. And then you have an alternate judge and an alternate commissioner. And in quorum would be any two of those three people present. We obviously try to...
But I did notice, every time, when they had a question, you advised them.
Yes, sir.
So I mean, that's why it might be necessary for you to be there.
Yes, sir.
And especially on that aspect of there, but I'm sure other, like you said about Sheriff Hunter, but at the end of the day, the other, the constitutional could potentially endure an additional cost.
Yes, sir.
If they're not accustomed to it.
Yes, sir.
And...
Now Sheriff Hunter's always separately compensated me, under a contract.
You know, and David, again, I appreciate the efforts that's been put into here and, you know, it's been kind of a unique week to try to study what's going on on the budget hearings and then also interpret all these red, crissy lines. And of course, I realize there is a motion and a second on the floor, but I would just render to the board, you know, are we time-sensitive here? There's nothing, give me some input here.
We are absolutely not time-sensitive. We just wanted to be in compliance with the administrative code.
I don't want to bore the crowd nor the board with, you know, all the marks I've got in here, just for clarification. I ain't saying nothing's wrong, I just, you know, I'm like Rocky, I, you know, for, and I'm just going to touch on one, I'm going to leave it alone. If it's not time-sensitive, just clearly for the record, I won't vote to pass this tonight, just because I've got a lot of questions that I just didn't have time, or did you have time this week for me to endure four, five, six, seven hour conversations? Because it's going to take a lot of that.
And that's absolutely fair.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I've got time to listen to the questions.
Mr. Chair?
Time to do what?
If I can make a suggestion, I think historically, we've been a little dismissive of the administrative code. I think that's reflected in the fact that we'd only looked at it once since 2014. But for your understanding and edification, other than the charter, this is the most important code that, for the day-to-day operations of the county, this is your instruction manual to your county manager. And so if the board does feel like it needs the indulgence of additional time or workshop, I would advise you to take it. So don't pass something that you're not very, very comfortable with.
This is very critical, ultimately, but not time-sensitive.
Just a real simple one, because, I mean, you had this discussion, but in the organization of how you broke it down, and I kind of like how some of them are, and I don't dislike anything, but I didn't pick up where, you know, one of the conversations that you had, where's the addressing part? What department, you know, who's that up there? I didn't, I didn't even see the addressing in here.
Right, because that was a single-member department.
Correct.
It's no longer listed in the admin code. So every year, when I come to you in the budget, I'm going to give you an organizational chart. We will attach an organizational chart as we go through the, let me back up. If you adopt this, we have to go through all of the job descriptions to make sure they are consistent with what you adopt.
Okay.
So if we adopt the administrative code, we're going to revise every single job description. I think that's where you'll see the organizational chart and where each of the individual pieces are falling. For instance, you and I talked about code enforcement. Where would code enforcement fall in this? There's several places you can put it. You can put it under any of the departments, but you would make the department, you'd make the decision that makes the most sense of where it should go. But it doesn't need, that part doesn't need to be in the administrative code. All the administrative code does is establish the departments. Then, you know, we would, when we give you organizational charts, say, this is where we think this particular department fits or fits best.
Mr. Chairman, I stand by my motion to adopt the revised administrative code. It, as I said, it's streamlined what we're doing and it eliminates the John Waynes out there. Everybody have to answer to somebody under somebody umbrella and there's no way that you can have one person as a department here. He's John Wayne-ing or she's John Wayne-ing. And we don't need that. We need a credibility by them working under somebody. It's nothing that we are making shift do. It's part of the charter that we, we, we are streamlining our administrative code after. And I stand by my motion.
Stand by my second.
Mr. Chair, I have, I had, I did have the opportunity, I don't remember if I talked to Mr. Foreman or Mr. Kraus on the, on the issue with the attorney constitutional officers, but, so I'm, I'm good with that after the explanation. However, if my, some of my colleagues have concerns and need more time to review this, I am okay with tableing this tonight and readdressing it in another meeting.
Well, we have a motion and a second on the floor. So we have, we need, we have to take a vote.
Yes, sir.
You have a card, that's right. Come on up, Mr. Look, if you'd speak.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I don't want to waste the board's time. This is a very serious issue. I listened to what everybody had to say, Mr. Chairman. I don't want to waste everybody. It appears that there's three votes against not following through with this tonight. Mr. Murphy, yourself and Mr. Witt. So I would waive my card. It appears that this is not going to go through this evening and I'll sit down and take my chances and speak when it comes up again. Thank you very much.
If you, if you got an issue with, on the, on this...
I got lots of issues with this. First of all, there's not enough time. Second of all, Mr. Foreman might not remember that the last administrative code, from what I recall, was done at a workshop. It just didn't fly out of nowhere. So Mr. Foreman was not, didn't do his homework and go back and pay attention to the exact history of it. Most of my concerns with all the red lines, which is everything that struck out, and particularly the county attorney. And I would just respectfully point out to this board in section one, I guess it's article four, Mr. Foreman even decided to change the Roman numerals to numbers. I'm not sure why. It seemed to may be a make-work project where Mr. Foreman could just keep that time clock going forever. A lot of these don't seem to be necessary changes. But in the administrative code, it even leaves out the section of the law that establishes Mr. Foreman's position. So now nobody even knows where he came from and that it, and I, of course, I'm in favor of an elected county attorney. Nobody even knows where it came from. And it seems like he's setting out all this stuff that... And it seems like he's setting out all the stuff that should have been done by an ordinance to start with, or in his contract, or in the charter. Says, and then there's a whole cacophony, a, a, a list, a laundry list of all the things that Mr. Foreman now has decided that he should do. And Mr. Foreman and whoever else worked on this with him. And it's even, even the county manager, that he has to work with the county manager. I don't even know what this means. It used to say that he would cooperate and coordinate and advise the county manager. In this case, it's Mr. Kraus to my right. Now it says he worked in the manager's office in fulfillment, in fulfillment of the manager's duties and responsibilities. I don't know what that means even. And, you know, I'm reasonably familiar with the English language, as you probably well know. Does that mean he sits in and goes over the agendas to make sure that Mr. Kraus is doing his job? I mean, I don't know. I mean, if you look at this county attorney stuff, this is totally amazing. And then to get a contract with the constitutional officers? He gets elected to represent the, the, the residence of Columbia County. Period. And just one more thing, if I can, just to follow up on what he said. He said he has a contract with the sheriff. You know, the Bible says you can only work for one master. And if the sheriff is funneling him business, then he shouldn't be the county attorney. And if he wants to be the county attorney, then he shouldn't be going out getting separate contracts with each constitutional officer. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I look forward to this being postponed.
All right, we got a motion and a second.
I have concerns. If, if, if this vote goes through and we vote this down, is there an opportunity to bring it back?
Yes.
Absolutely. I mean, you always have a chance to vote on the administrative code. You would, I would ask you if, if the board chooses not to move forward and the vote does not pass. I would seek direction from you immediately, asking you, do you want this as a workshop or you just want more time?
Okay.
All right, call.
Okay, I get that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Ah.
All opposed?
Ah.
I think, I'll, I'm sorry, Chair.
I was just going to say, I, I think we need to set it on workshop.
Before that, we need to confirm that the motion failed by vote two.
Okay, motion failed three to two.
Thank you.
I would like to see us get together for about an hour, maybe before the next meeting with a workshop on this to go over some, some issues. If we can meet like at 4:30 before the next meeting.
That's what the board wants.
And then, and then, once we get clarification on some other issues, everybody's okay with everything.
How, how are we going to have a workshop before the meeting and then put it on the agenda?
I'm not going to put it on that agenda, we'll put it on the next agenda. So basically it'll be on the second meeting of June.
Which is the 17th, I believe.
Yep.
Chair, Chair, I would, not trying to sway you one way, but I, I just, it's a very, I, I've got to go on the bound to what Joel said here. I, I want to be, I'm going to do my diligence and, but, you know, hopefully the community will too. You know, this is, this is a, like David said, this is a very important, this is your, that's his direction. You know, so anyway, so I'll give it, say, do we need this in a motion?
No, you chairman has. Set up a workshop directly, set up a workshop. What I will do is I will break this into sections and at the workshop we'll go section by section.
Okay. And I know you'll be, I know you'll be available to us all prior to that. And I'll, hopefully we won't have a budget workshop that week around 500 questions.
So we'll have the workshop on June 3rd with the vote pushed to, if the workshop agrees at that point, vote put on the 17th.
Do we need a motion for that, Joel?
What workshop?
I'm sure you guys, the chair, can set the workshop.
Okay, so we're setting a workshop for, you want to do 4:00, 4:30 guys?
4:00.
4:00 o'clock on the 17th.
So the only item on this workshop will be the administrative code.
Yes. Yep, for the next meeting, what date is that?
June 3rd.
June, June 3rd, okay. And can we take a little recess?
Absolutely.
Five minutes.
David, you may proceed.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the summer youth employment program. As you remember, you previously supported this program. It is a joint city, county, Florida Crown project where they help the youth of this county, the high schoolers, get jobs, learn job skills, get used to the workforce. It also provides workers for both the city and the county. So again, it was done last year. You agreed last year to give $25,000. City was also going to put up $25,000. Due to COVID, it did not happen. So the city has asked that we resurrect it. We would basically, the BA would move money out of fund balance, which is at the end of the year, if you don't spend it, it flows to fund balance. So basically you'd be taking last year's $25,000 out of fund balance, putting it into this year's budget and spending the money on the summer youth program.
Mr. Chair, I am, I am your commissioner that serves on Florida Crown. And this is a very good program. It's very well administered and the, the kids actually do get a very good experience out of it. It is $25,000 well spent. So I will make the motion to approve the agreement for the summer youth program and budget amendment 21-41.
Okay.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next item is a very important item. If I can get the clicker to work. There we go. Cold Storage. Cold Storage is requesting a tax incentive. Specifically, they're seeking a three-year, 100% tax exemption, which is approved under the state of Florida, under the state of Florida regulations. They went to the Economic Development Advisory Board. The Economic Development Advisory Board looked at it and said, we've got a scorecard. So really, if you go followed by our scorecard, it could be a 75% tax rebate rather than an exception. And it would also be for three years. The board, county commissioners can approve either option or no options or whatever they want. The EDAB did recognize that they are, have been in our community since 2008. They have expanded their business in 2013. They now want to expand their business again. And they mentioned that several members of the EDAB felt it was very important to mention that economic development incentives shouldn't just be for businesses that aren't here. At some point, we should help the businesses that are here grow and expand. So that was something they felt strongly about. They didn't vote on it, but that was something they felt strongly about. And so at this point in time, I'm going to turn the floor over. And the gentleman from Cold Storage is here to tell you about his project.
I appreciate you taking the time to learn about the cold storage. I'm not just, my name's Paul Bortfield. I'm the general manager. I'm responsible for all aspects of our business here in Lake City. Many of you may not know what we do. We're a public refrigerated warehouse. What that simply means is we don't own any of the product. We're experts at storage and distribution of food products and some other products. But the majority of what we do there is, is food product distribution. So we're bringing in truckloads of food product and we're distributing that to other DCs. For an example, like Target, Walmarts, CNS, all those places. So we ship to the Southeast United States. In the past, our opportunities were strictly by way of truck. So we, we bring trucks in and then we ship trucks out. In the, for the, for the past really 10 or 12 years, we've really been trying to get rail service to our facility. That opens up a completely different aspect of product coming into the local area and being distributed in very large quantities. Across the United States, you know, normal product moves by truck, but product that can be moved by rail is very cost efficient. Because a lot of it moves out of the California area or up in the Northwest. Biggest part of that would be potatoes and dairy stuff and stuff like that. So, so the opportunities come up and what we're asking is, is for you guys to consider what we got going on. So that's a little bit about what we do. I'm, I'm sure many of you have been by our facility. We have a, basically a really nice facility. Our company provides us with huge capital and expenses to maintain. If you go and look at our building, it looks similar to what it looked like when it was built in 2008. So we keep a Class A operation going. It's a very good place for people to work. If you go into our facility, we have very clean areas for our employees. We, good, good equipment, good clothing. We always update it and keep everything good. And we consider ourselves more of a family there. So we work with our employees with any issues they have and, and try to be just a great employer. We pay good wages and we have premium benefits. So I'll run through it. I'm going to try to get through this really quick because I, I know you guys don't want to be here all night. So, but basically we're owned by Swire. And Swire is, has a publicly traded side of their business. They also have a private side. We're part of the private and another business, local business is part of Swire, which is HEICO. And they're on the publicly traded side. So, but you see Swire's a very old company, a lot of employees, a lot of revenue. And they invest back in their company to grow the business. So you can see all the different type, they're in shipping and shipping, shipping groceries and actually ships and aviation, all kinds of stuff. So, but good company. So United States Cold Storage, we're, we're a nationwide company and most of the buildings are built in distribution hubs. Lake City was built here because of Interstate 10 and Interstate 75 to really move product from Atlanta to North Florida. Because much of the product coming out of Atlanta was going to Florida anyway. So that was, when it was originally built, that was to be a distribution center, taking business from Atlanta. And we've been very successful with that. But the, the company owns, you know, 42 buildings. We're number three in the country. We consider ourselves the best cold storage in the country. And, and, and that's really based on customer service, employees and the ability for our customers to actually be able to speak with the people taking care of their business. So many of you know, the building with, the original building was built in 2008. I came here shortly after it was built. I have about 42 years of experience in, in distribution of food. Currently have about 68 employees. You see what our wage is. The capital investment of all was about $40 million. We measure our building by cubic feet. We're about 8.4 million cubic feet. We have 32,000 rack locations. We have 33 dock doors and eventually we'll have the rail in the back. I don't know why they put two rail doors, but we'll, the, the, the plan is to build a finger dock. And that finger dock's going to accommodate four rail cars. So we're going to bring, bring the four rail cars in. And as soon as we complete the, the finger dock, we're going to retrofit two rooms. We have two rooms that we built in phase two that can be retrofitted for, to unload rail cars. So we'll have that retrofitted and we'll be able to accommodate somewhere at seven to eight rail cars per day. And that, that really equates to about 200 million pounds of product coming into the building on this side and going out of the building on the other side. So, and, so the current abatement was, was approved in 2014. And there you see the taxes that we paid to date and we're projecting we'll pay about another million dollars in taxes to the end of that abatement. And this kind of shows you how our building's laid out. But basically the, the current, if you look at the first three boxes on, on the left side, that's our original building, three rooms. And then we built on, we have three rooms there, the four rooms in the middle are convertible rooms. We can run those at any temperatures we want. We currently have freezers, ice cream, coolers, and we, we do blast freezing. You see up there where it says option four, that's where the finger dock will be built. The rail will come off of, from the east and will position four, there'll be positions there for four rail cars. And like I said, the future is, and that's probably going to be. rail cars. And like I said, the future is, and that's probably going to be, we're going to build that and then start building on to the converting the rooms, and that'll give us an opportunity for eight rail cars, around seven or eight. So capital investment's about $2.8 million. I think we're, when it says 15 employees, I think that's probably low. I think we'll probably be more at 20 or so. And as we grow, this is really just basically opening up the future for a Phase 3 build. We still own that property right next to the building. That can probably build out probably about 5 million cubic feet. Probably would end up with some automation in that. If I had to guess, the company is currently, when they do builds, they're adding some type of automation. So anyway, that's probably three or four years from now, if I had to guess, before we would build that out. We have plenty of room now for this new, for this new finger dock and bringing the product in, so we're good there. This is just another picture of the finger dock. You see the position of four rails. This is just a very simple build. It's just a building, just basically a dock with four doors on it and an entry into our freezer. So we'll have, we'll unload the rail cars with what they call a slip attachment. They go to pallets, and then somebody hauls it and they put it away with a forklift. Pretty straightforward. It's actually really good business. This business, this slide just shows the rail coming in from the east. It crosses over some property. We own like five acres of land, just our main property, then we own another five acres that kind of crosses over that part. This kind of gives you an idea of what it looks like with a bunch of empty racks. Obviously, our goal is to fill those racks. And really ideally, in our business, is we want to bring product in, ship the product out, bring it in and ship it out, because that's how we get paid. So we're basically charging a fee for handling and storage of the product. And I forgot to tell you, we really support local businesses, people starting up, small businesses. I'll just give you a couple of examples. There's a gentleman that started a business with raw pet food called Canine. He doesn't use a lot of our space, but we do allow small people that only store just maybe a few pallets to come in, and we have some customers that have 5,000 pallets. But we do support the community with, we have people, some rubber companies that bring in some rubber, and then we support the glass industry in Florida. We have some plastic film that goes in storm windows. So we support like 10 glass factories here in Florida. And so overall, it's an exciting place. Hope you consider what we're proposing there. I can only see continued growth within our business, and hopefully in a couple, three years, we'll build Phase 3, and then I'm going to retire.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just for the, just to be, just to be clear with the public in attendance, the tax abatement that we're discussing tonight is just for this new construction. The company currently does pay a lot of taxes, and they're going to pay a lot more taxes when the abatement they have existing runs out in 2023. They have been a good steward. They have been a good partner with us in past tax abatements and doing what they promised to do as far as jobs and commitment, and this is the kind of partner, corporate partner, we need in Columbia County. So I have 15 jobs. Again, it's about return on investment. I have no problem approving this. I think the challenge of the TDC was the scorecard doesn't fit every situation, and I don't think it fit his very well, and I think that's why you're kind of getting, you know, the push to bring it to the board to kind of give him what he wants, because had the TDC, I mean, had the TDC, I'm sorry, had the Economic Development Council, Advisory Council been able to do it with their rules, I think they would have.
Yeah.
That is my motion.
Second. Any other, any other discussion? Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for what you do for our economy here.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Chair, for clarification, there'll be a little bit more that y'all, y'all have to look at an economic development agreement. It'll be very similar to what was done in 2013 for their current abatement. It's a statutory process. So when you see it on the agenda again, don't get confused and think we already approved this. There's a couple of formalities we'll walk through over the next couple of meetings.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you for that.
Thank you very much. Too far. All right. The next item we have is another economic development issue or agreement. Consulting agreement with Buchanan, Ingersoll, and Rooney. Basically, they're asking to represent us on economic development issues, specifically aviation-related and other things. They feel that they can provide us strong relationships with key stakeholders in Florida, specifically Interfly Florida, Career Source, Space Florida, and other public officials. This was on last month's, last week's agenda, or last meeting's agenda. We pulled it because we negotiated a cheaper rate. Originally, it was going to be twice the cost for a year, a retain of year. We told them basically that we originally wanted the city to pay 50%, but they wouldn't be able to do so until the next fiscal year because we'd have to go through their budgeting process. So what they did is they agreed to cut their fee in half to $3,250 a month and only charge us between now in November, now in October, so now in September, actually, technically. And we can see if they're successful in getting us grants, specifically for this particular project that we're working on, HEICO.
David, as me and you spoke this week in your office, we'll be looking to this company for progress, you know, for their performance. So I would just simply ask, I support it, and I'd just simply ask that a couple of questions. Me and you discussed relevant to additional costs and stuff that'd help us make a, you know, an intelligent decision six months from now whether we want to keep them long or not.
Right. And I'll keep you informed on the invoices. Those items are like if they incur costs in terms of travel or hotels and those types of things. So those would be the additional costs beyond the retainer.
Yeah, I like this idea. You get to try them out for a few months.
Yeah.
Well, you saw a long-term contract. Okay, is that?
I move to approve.
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the six-month solar agreement to amount of $19,000.
I've got a second, Mr. Chairman.
I got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I have a card over? Okay, yeah. I got you. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I just got a couple of things with this. One of the attorneys, Mike Rissim, I've seen him in action. He's actually pretty good, and I don't really have good things to say about any attorneys, but he's like really sharp. But I do have a question about the contract. It says records retention. This county has had a problem before with records retention. Years and years ago, when, when Mike Rogan worked with the firm that's now run, I guess, by Mattamore, and a bunch of records disappeared from the county, Mr. Foreman at that time, a few years ago, a few years ago, tried to retrieve those records. I put in a public records request. All these records disappeared, not the first time records ever disappeared from Columbia County, from the HR department. These records involved Mr. Kirby, and I'm not going to go into the details with that. There was investigations and things like that that just disappeared from Columbia County. They were public records. Mr. Foreman and Mr. Scott went to either Jacksonville or Tallahassee, I don't remember whether they had moved or not before, and tried to retrieve those records. Mr. Foreman told me at that time that he had looked for the records and he couldn't find them. The firm basically told me to piss off when I put in a public records request for them. This part of, on page 147 of your packet, it says records retention. At the county's request, we will deliver the documents and property the county has provided, the firm, et cetera. Because these public records are public records that belong to the county, I would ask that that be changed, that at the end of the contract, that those records automatically be returned to Columbia County. Not that two years from now, somebody on the board wants to go looking for them, and then they send Mr. Foreman and somebody else, and all of a sudden, they can't be found. This has clearly happened in the past, and should anybody want more documentation on that, just give me a call. So I would ask that this be changed. Those records belong to the county, and to protect the county's interest in any record that they own, that at determination of this, that those records just be returned and they copy whatever they want. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I think that makes sense.
Thank you, Mr. Look. Attorney, would you like to comment on that?
It's a contract, so if you want to, you know, accept it with a renegotiated provision there, record retention, that's within discretion of the board.
You got a motion and a second. You got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Next item is very simple and straightforward. You've had two public hearings on the CDBG grant for HEICO, $1.5 million to add fire suppression to one of the hangars. We're planning to submit the application by the end of the month. This is a resolution that basically authorizes the chair and the county manager to sign the documents related to this specific grant.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So.
Before, before we go to number 10, let's go ahead and get this out of the way for the, oh.
Veterans Affairs.
Veterans Affairs, yeah.
All right. The chair, the board basically requested we bring back Veterans Affairs issue tonight so that we can change what was approved previously. Previously, you had approved that we hire a temporary person, part-time, for six months as a trial basis to see.
Whoa, whoa. You all right?
I think the shoe had a blow up.
High heels got you.
He tripped you. He tripped you. We saw it.
We'll blame the school district, not just him. Anyway, so you approved doing a temporary employee half-time for six months as a trial basis to see if we could help more veterans than are currently being helped, because right now, our part-time Veterans Affairs Officer is only there three days a week. At the workshop, he offered a counterproposal, and the board wanted to bring this up tonight, which is why we did the addition to the agenda, to decide, do you want to change what was approved, or if you want to go forward with what was approved?
I just, it was my issue, and I just soon approved this, I think it's six hours a day, five days a week, and I move that we approve Mr. Worley being there six, five days a week, six hours a day, instead of using the $200.
Second. David, Chair, if you would, me and you had a discussion about this last night when you called me. The caveat that's in here that I don't think this board discussed yesterday about the 29, 30, 30 versus hour.
Right. If Mr. Worley works more than 29 hours, he's entitled to benefits, including health insurance, which would add about $10,000 to the cost of the program.
That's fine.
So you're going from $10,000 to $20,000.
So we can limit it to 29 hours.
That could be the board's.
Friday, he can work five hours a day.
But is he willing to do that? I'm just telling you, I can't speak for Mr. Worley, but I can speak for what I would do in that situation. If you're telling me I'm going from a job where I'm showing up two days a week, this is pretty much part-time, and now I'm going to show up every day of the week, even though it's only 20 more hours, the benefits, the benefits is probably, you know, caveat for him wanting to do that.
Send him to do so.
Send him to do so. So you either want somebody there full-time, or you don't. So you've had the complaints. I say you try it out this year. If it doesn't, if it doesn't work out, in the next year's budget hearings, you can, you can see what's happening, and you can adjust it.
And it's for veterans, and I don't mind spending the money for veterans.
As Mr. Worley said, he's going to keep good data, so you know, it's, we had that discussion. I just wanted to be out, so yeah.
Motion and second.
A motion and second.
Okay, we got a motion.
He's got a comment.
I've got a comment.
I just got a question. I went down to the veteran services before the budget hearing. But this piece of paper that you guys handed out at the beginning of the meeting, what is it, does it say on here? Is it just mine that's misprinted that doesn't say what the new conditions are anywhere in writing? Is this the way we work now?
We discussed this in the workshop the other night, other day.
Yeah, but you handed it out, you added it to tonight's agenda, and it's not one word.
So basically, what we're doing, instead of hiring a part-time guy to help Mr. Worley, Mr. Worley has agreed to work five days a week, six hours a day. So he will be in the office for Veterans Affairs five days a week, and we're agreeing to let him work five days a week, six hours a day, 30 hours a week, instead of hiring a part-time person to help him.
I, I, I thank you for that explanation, but in order for the public to have a right to comment, this stuff either should have been added, or there should have been some words on here. I don't know who's responsible for this. It certainly is not me, that this program that you've now offered to Mr. Worley, or he's offered to the county, is not even written down.
We'll take it, Mr. Look. Thank you.
You know, come on, you guys.
I understand.
And I will take responsibility for that. We decided this yesterday. We had a board meeting today, and I just did not.
Well, I think everybody on the board knew, but, and this is, this is an item, we're trying to help the veterans out. They're having issues getting their paperwork filled out in a timely manner. Some of them, not at all. So I think, I think we're just trying to take a step to help the veterans out, and we're trying to do it as soon as possible because we have an issue at this time. We're trying to solve it.
But this is perfectly good example that, about walking things out.
Isn't this, didn't we say some of this was for Memorial Day that we were going, are we going?
Originally, we were going to try and start this Memorial Day so that we.
That's kind of why we were trying.
Get a push out there for the press, into the press. We would like to get this out there so the veterans understand that, you know, the county is committed to this and really wants to help the veterans out more than we have.
It's kind of a Memorial Day thing, so that's, that's a little bit of the excuse for the speeding it up a little bit.
In addition, there'll also be kiosks in each of the library with information for all the veterans.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, number 10.
All right. This one's going to take a little bit longer. It's no longer called CARES. It's no longer called COVID release. It's now called the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA. So we're going to start calling it ARPA money. U.S. Treasury went ahead and opened the portal. We went in there and signed up in the portal, filled out all the paperwork, so we're good to go. Columbia County will receive $13,924, $165. We did complete the certification process. In about 30 days or so, we should get 50% of the money, and then 12 months after that, we'll get the remainder of the money. It covers the period of March 3rd, 2021, to December 31st, 2024. There's a caveat about that I'll talk about in a minute, and our first report is due August 31st. So by August 31st, we have to have a pretty good idea of how we want to spend the money. There's five basic areas that you can spend the money on: public health-related issues, like the Health Department, to address the negative impacts of COVID-19, to address the loss of public revenues, premium pay for essential employees, or infrastructure investments. I'll go into a little bit more detail of what that means. So before I get into the more details, ARPA also included all these other grants. So there are other funding opportunities for both us, for small businesses, for individuals that may be going through the state, or directly to other agencies. So as you can see, there are a bunch of other programs out there that ARPA funded. We had a lot of money. Per the U.S. Treasury guidance that came out just on May 10th, again, we'll get 50% in May 2021, and the balance delivered in 12 months. You don't need to know about that, but the state's going to receive one payment for unemployment and pass that out directly from the state. So what does that mean for us? Any cost that we have incurred since March 3rd, 2021 possibly could be covered. You have till 2024 to encumber the money, commit the money, have it dedicated. The period of performance is December 31st, 2026. So what that means is if you're doing a large infrastructure project, you have to have it under contract by the end of 2024. That money has to be committed. The work has to be completed by 2026, but the money has to be committed by 2024. So that gives you a couple of years to build whatever infrastructure, broadband, whatever it is that you feel is important. So that's an important distinction. So you can do things to support public health, including mitigation efforts, medical expenses, helping the Health Department, behavioral health care, and helping out the public health safety staff. That is something you can do. There are more regulations that get more specific, if that's the direction the board wishes to go. You can address the negative impacts that this has had on people, specifically to workers and households, small businesses, impacted industries, the public sector. What you need to understand is it has to be an identified negative economic impact. You just can't hand the money out. You have to have an identified. You have to have an identified negative economic impact and whatever assistance you give has to be proportional to that impact. So you just can't say this time we're going to give everybody $40,000. Whatever you give somebody has to be proportional to whatever the negative economic impact is. It specifically mentions impacted industries such as tourism, travel, hospitality, as well as job training and career source type things. That is specifically mentioned in the legislation is something they want to promote. It does include not-for-profits and it also says if there is a specific area of low income, they will get a presumption of being eligible. If you have a project in a low-income area, that will help presume that project is eligible and it'll be less criticized when the auditors come in and say you misspent the money. Replace lost public sector revenue. This is basically if you lose money or we did lose money, which we did because of COVID, you can replace that money. However, if you look at the note on the bottom, you're going to have to go over the past three years prior to COVID and use a growth adjustment of 4.1% or the average growth of that period, whichever is greater. So you're going to have to take the money you would have received, add that growth each year to come up with what they call a counterfactual revenue. And then you can subtract out your actual revenues and that's what produces your revenue reduction. They want to make sure that you account for growth and don't just take more money. So you have to calculate what that growth would have been had you received those funds. And best example of that is TDC. We all know how the travel and tourism was tranked and we lost a lot of TDC money. If this is something the board wishes to pursue, we can calculate what it would mean to the TDC to put those revenues back into the TDC coffers or other funds. It could be any fund, but I mean, that's basically the format you have to do. Premium pay for eligible workers. So you can give money to eligible workers. They prefer you do it to the ones that are on the lower end of the pay scale. Eligible workers are those people that specifically worked hands-on dealing with people with COVID or dealing with COVID prevention or essential workers that kept things going during the COVID crisis. You can give them up to a $13 an hour boost, but you cannot exceed $25,000 per worker. And again, they prioritize lower income workers and this can be over a four-year period. So you could theoretically give a raise to somebody for $12,000 a year for four years, as long as you don't exceed the $25,000. So that's an option you have. And again, that's going to be your sheriff's officers, people, your dispatchers. Again, any of your custodians, custodians are specifically mentioned in the law. So that is something the board can do as well. And then infrastructure investment. Of course, this is something that's near and dear to my heart. You can invest in water, sewer, stormwater and broadband. They use the clean drinking water standards. Broadband is very tricky if you get into it because there's certain threshold performance levels and it's got to be broadband to rural, low-income areas. So it's something to think about. I don't know that we would have the expertise. We could hire somebody to help us with that if that's something the board wished to choose. It also could be used for water reuse projects or infrastructure resiliency. What you can't use it for is just general projects. They want to know you're improving drinking water or sewer to people. So some of your economic development projects may not qualify, others will. So it just depends on, you know, who all is ultimately getting the benefit from the project. Again, finally, cybersecurity to protect water and sewer. Obviously, it's very important to all of us. We don't want what happened to the pipeline happening here. So prohibited uses. You cannot use this to reduce your taxes. You cannot use this to put deposits into pension funds. You cannot use it to do things that are disproportionate to the impact that COVID had on whatever did it. You can't stick it in reserves and put it in a rainy day fund. You can't use it to pay off your old debt or pay fees for future debt or new debt. Again, the expenses have to be, cannot be prior to March 30, March 3rd, 2021. Can't do settlements and judgments. Duplication of benefits. Anytime you're using federal benefits, you have to be sure that you aren't duplicating what somebody's already getting. So you have to be very careful that you're not duplicating what somebody has already received or will receive from other funding sources. And then finally, you can't use it as matching funds for federal grants that bar the use of using federal funds. So basically, if you have a grant and it requires a local match and that grants a federal grant, they're going to say you can't use federal funds for your match. You cannot use this money for your match. Having said all that, it also specifically talks about congregate settings, which means you could use this money to fix the air conditioning system at the jail. So they could be used for improving the ventilation systems in congregate settings. So you have a lot of options. You know, I basically would suggest this is another workshop-type item where we can go through it and really talk about where your priorities are. The goal is we have to be able to have this before the first recording period. You won't get any money till 30 days from now. Other caveat I need to let you know. The last time we did this, it was a reimbursement project. This is not. They're giving you the money upfront. You're going to spend it. They're going to come back and audit you. And if you don't spend it right, they're going to say, hey, pay us back. But they're giving you the money upfront. It's not a reimbursement. So you have to decide upfront how you're going to spend this money.
David, is all the money that we spent on the first round, has it all been reimbursed as of today?
Technically, all the money that was spent was reimbursed. The amount we reimbursed back, we then spent on other programs. We did not spend the full amount. Remember, if you remember last December, the board said they wanted to hold out two to two and a half million dollars in case something happened in COVID that we didn't, weren't prepared for. So that two and a half, it's actually, I think, I just had Ben run the numbers. It's about $2.3 million left of the last reimbursement.
We want to do.
And I got a spreadsheet from Ben if you need it.
You want to do public comment at this time? I got some cards on.
Sure.
Sylvester Warren. John Cole.
He is handing you a flyer.
Thank you, Donald.
John Cole. Hi, good evening. My name is John Lit Cole. Most of you knew my father, John Cole, who owned Cole's Hardware downtown for so many years. And then he had, he had been teaching at CHS for the last few years, but has been teaching for about 25 years. What you may not know is he started a program in 2015 called Kids Feeding Kids Through Our School System. He passed away in November due to cancer and before he passed, he asked me to take over his program. Since then, we have been blessing many families around Columbia County. We helped about 30 kids out last Christmas with food and toys so these kids could have a Christmas. One dream my dad had was to open an ECO Agriculture Education Center that would offer classes for adults and after-school programs for teens to help them teach them growing skills and important lessons on what they need to know to self-sustain. Some of the successes we've had so far is we have now got land donated north of Walmart on Baskin-Norris Road. We have about 1,000 hydroponic towers that will grow about 20,000 vegetable plants so we can open a U. Pickett farm and we have some greenhouses already. We will also have youth gardens where students can grow their own food and then take that food home with them to feed their families. Recently, we were asked to take over another nonprofit called Saving Our Children, whom the founder of that now has cancer. And she, she asked us to take over and we're going to change everything over tomorrow, actually. And they specialize in teen addiction and recovery. This is a major need in our community. If you remember with the quarantine, we saw a lot of teenage rates of suicidal ideations and cutting has all gone up. And so this is an opportunity where we can open a recovery center for them and they can work in the agriculture center to get, to have learned coping skills and to learn customer service and even get volunteer hours if they need to. We were planning also for a thrift store, which is one of the owners of Saving Our Children was one of her things was to open a thrift store, which will have garden supplies, housewares and clothing. We're asking part of this money to be saved for us so that we can open this ag center even quicker than we had planned. And that way we can help our community feed their families and teach them how to grow their own food. That way they can self-sustain. So if possible, we would love for you to support our dream, my dad's dream. And I only had two minutes, so I'm trying to rush to it. And maybe put Columbia County on the map for something that's huge, like a big ag center. It's never been done like this before. So thank you so much. You can ask questions if you need to.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tomes Ruiz.
Hey, how y'all doing? My name is Tomes Ruiz. I'm a local, local boy here in the community of Lake City. And I started a nonprofit organization called Gifted Ones. It's where I take the youth and I basically mentor them.
What was it?
Gifted Ones.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, so I'm a basketball coach, but I also mentor the youth here in the community and I keep them out of trouble. And right now, I, I do it, I do it alone and I have roughly over 20 kids growing. And we're doing AAU right now. And besides basketball, football, flag football, I do numerous activities with them and I have no help. And a lot of stuff I do comes out of pocket. I take them home, I pick them up, I feed them if I can. And I work part-time, so I do a lot by myself. So I'm just asking, whenever y'all do decide to allocate these funds, that y'all think about the gifted ones and the kids that I'm trying to help. And take them out of town and just show them different things in Lake City because a lot of these kids never get to experience that. So when I do have free time, I take these kids and I do whatever I can with them to keep them out of trouble in my free time. So I just ask that y'all consider the gifted ones on your agenda. Y'all got any questions?
Yeah, I got one. Do you get like donations from other people too?
Um, I've got one donation so far, but I haven't gotten like big donations because the thing is, I work, I work in Jacksonville and then when I come back here, I have to go straight to practice. Some kids don't have transportation home, so that's like the big, that's the big problem, transportation. So if I, like, my whole vision was to get like a van, like a 16-passenger van or something big where I can like, you know, have the means to take these kids home where I know parents, when they get off work, they not thinking about, you know, doing this and doing that. They trying to get home, get sleep and feed the other kids and cook. And, you know, so I'm trying to, you know, be that, be that help line that, you know, can assist them with this.
So you do it here in Columbia County?
I do it in Columbia.
Do you do it at the gym?
I do it at the gym, Lake City Middle School. I do it at, we have a place of business called Logopop. I use the court sometimes when that school over with, I'll take them out to the court and do that in my free time. And I travel, I travel down south in Naples. I stayed in Naples a few years ago and I started it there. But when I came here, I feel like the kids needed it more here because those kids are more privileged and they see a lot more than these kids here and I'm from there. So.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ruiz, I'm sorry. Are you, I like to get to, I'm sorry. Are you a registered 501(c)(3)?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good.
Yes, sir.
Good.
And I have a small training business too that I do with the kids too if it needed, you know, like they need extra, if they need extra like lessons with basketball, football, anything, I do it all. So, yeah. Y'all consider me. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Warren.
Question, I want to make sure that I'm treated fairly. A few people want over the two minutes. And so if I need to go over two minutes, is it possible that you treat me fairly as other people who know the two minutes?
Yes. I'll give you the same, I'll give you the same courtesy I give everyone else.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Sylvester Warren, the third. My concern with the American Rescue Plan money, it is a great hope of myself, many other people who couldn't be here. I spoke to them, they had to leave because the meeting was taking longer than what they had time to spare, is that we don't forget about the business community, which is the heartbeat of our economy. I think that we had an awesome program last time. I understand that Mr. Kraus mentioned that we may can't do the $40,000 that is going to be impact-based. And I did hear him mention other things, but there was no real focus on the business community. The business community is still hurting. You also have another aspect of the business community where you have startup companies. I think that they should be given a sentence through this program where they demonstrate they can add jobs, add companies, that they be given money as well. I think what we heard from some of the Lit Coles, I think Mr. Ruiz is that nonprofits got left out last time. And these are nonprofit organizations that have been negatively impacted and that they can do great things in the community. I think $14 million is a lot of money that I would love to see not prioritized necessarily to infrastructure, but the money be split up in such a nice way that it benefit many sections of our community that needs the money and not just a chunk of it prioritized to some of the other things that I know that the commissions have been focused and working on. So I just want to know, it's something similar to what we did last time with the business community is the consensus of this board.
Well, I think you heard Mr. Kraus, we're going to do a workshop. Right now, this is the first time we've seen this. So as far as I, as far as me personally, I'm just going to have to see all the details and then I'll make a, make a commitment.
I thought this was on, this was an agenda item. This was an agenda item.
For discussion.
For discussion. When will, when will we have it back on for workshop?
After the workshop. We're going, we're going to schedule a workshop.
So we don't know when we're going to schedule one? It just be?
Has to be.
I would say with the next, the next couple, two or three meetings.
Yeah.
And then from that point, then you'll come back up as the public discuss it. Y'all have more of a sense of where y'all want to go with it and so forth. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, once it's on the agenda, it'll still be public discussion.
Go ahead.
One of the things, Mr. Warren, is that there, the guideline that David talked about, what the money can be used for, that's the first that I've seen and I guess these other board members anyway. So the best thing for us to do is to have a workshop and go through these guidelines. If I'm reading it, the same guideline that helped small businesses last time, those guidelines have changed. I thought I heard him say that nonprofit organizations was exempt from this time from being able to get money to a workshop would be what we need to fan it out to make sure that we follow the guidelines. So when we award money, when we come back and do an audit, we don't have to pay that money back. So the best way to handle that is through a workshop.
Well, I agree 100% that we do a workshop, but I saw in the, unless I misread it, that it said nonprofits were included.
Yeah, that's what I saw.
That's what I read. And so none of this workshop will come back. I just want to make sure that the money is just not going in one direction and that the community as a whole, it was impacted in several ways, businesses and nonprofits, that everybody get a, a shot at the apple depending on what the industry is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. I have one other card. Trishana Graham.
Good evening. I did not purposely match Mr. Williams, but he is my county commissioner for District One. I came this evening to speak in regards to a success story with the CARES Act. I am the CEO and founder of Seedlee Enterprises and we were awarded $23,200 in December. And at that time, my consulting firm had three staff members and we were literally just trying for our team to have a Christmas for our family. So we implemented that set money and I put that back into payroll and half of it went into marketing and branding. And right now, we are proudly an employer of 11 District One employees. We have a full staff. They're all in District One. We have two. We have two facilities on Baya Avenue. We have Suite one oh three as well as Suite one oh nine. We also have a contract with Tom Eagle and Daniel Krabs to be the new Leasee of the old Social Security building that's right next to Etheridge Farmer Furniture. And so were Mr. Kraus and he was very, very helpful in implementing my staff to be able to use those said CARES Act funds. He answered every call I had, he answered every concern. And so when he stated that some of the ARP funding can be used in order to help underprivileged economic small businesses, I feel like Sealy Enterprises fits that bill to a T. Now, I'm not like Cole Storage, but in five years, I hope to be as one and I can get that tax re amendment because that was beautiful just to hear. But I just want to let you know that the funds are going back into the community and we are making jobs in small businesses. And just because we're small at this moment, we're definitely growing because in the last five months, we went from a staff of three and now I'm proudly to have a staff of eleven. Thank you.
Wait, wait, tell me the name, I can't.
Okay, so it's Sealy Enterprises.
So we know what it is.
Okay, C space Lee Enterprises.
Okay.
It's named after my grandmother who is Catherine Lee Graham. She is no longer with us. Um, I have a DBA as Grant Bay Consulting and More. We are a multi-level grant writing and consulting firm for minority businesses in the nation. Um, I have a feature in Hello Alice, which is the number one small business platform. If you go on there and you put it in, you will see that Lake City, Florida is definitely on the map. Um, for the Juneteenth celebration with Channel Four News, I will be a speaker in regards to helping our community and helping put Lake City once again on the map. Um, my staff is all minority. My staff has a comparative um pay scale. They are leaving the Veterans Affairs to come work for little old me simply because we're able to provide jobs in our community. Um, we love District One, we appreciate you, Mr. Williams, we appreciate all of you in regards to it. And so when you are making dividends in that fourteen million dollars, don't forget about the small businesses because we are definitely making a change in the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For what you do.
Try to come to our workshop, you know.
More to this time, I I think I would ask if we set a date for a workshop on this money. Um, I'm open for suggestions when y'all want to do it.
Well, I think we, David got to have this by a certain date anyway, so David, you know, when you got to have
By August.
Huh?
By August.
By August, so you know, the sooner we get on it, the better off we are.
Right, we'll get the money in about thirty days.
Do y'all want to add this to the workshop or the administrative COVID and come earlier or?
I need to move it earlier.
Yeah. Let's just do it all one day. Because it, last time we, it seems like to me the last COVID thing, we were kind of behind. I want to be ahead.
David, when do you want to do this? I I
We can do it at the next meeting.
You better change that time.
Yeah, we need to change the time then from four probably to about two o'clock.
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock?
Yeah.
June third.
June third, two o'clock. So we'll be here basically from two till we leave.
Let me verify we can get the room. We'll make sure it gets posted, I'm pretty sure we can, but just in case there's a conflict. If there's a conflict, we'll find another location.
And that's a, that's a board meeting night, so we should be able to get the room.
Right. But if there is a conflict, we'll probably move it over across the street to the new Economic Development TDC building.
Well, I'll be at TDC building over there. I mean, let everybody see our new complex over there.
So we'll try for here first, but if there is a conflict, we'll move it there.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I don't, I don't know if it's relevant, Mr. Chair, but I just noticed on my calendar that CHS baccalaureate that night. So if any of y'all have high school seniors.
I don't have any I know of.
We may want to make that, but the actual board meeting, you might want to make it fast. I don't know if anybody has a graduating senior.
Anybody?
I don't.
Back where it, I'm 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 good with it.
Okay.
Okay, thank, thank you for that, Joe. I don't have any kids I know of.
All right, uh, David, let's go with that and uh if anything comes up, we can't do it or we have to move the meeting date, where we're gonna have it? I guess you'll let us know.
Like I said, if we can't have it there, we'll have it at the TDC Economic Development.
Okay. All right, any, any comments?
I I think
Too many comments?
We'll reserve comments until on that, until the workshop.
Pardon me?
I think the workshop's the place to comment on that.
Yeah, do, do we have too many comments at this time? Anybody got anything to add it? Just hoping anybody wants to come up. Okay, we have no comments. Oh. Ron?
Nothing.
Good?
I'm good.
Kevin?
Good.
Marty? Go.
No, sir, thank you.
David, Kevin?
We're good.
I take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.
Thanks, everyone, for attending.